Here we are.
I wonder if they before the election.
Make sure everybody votes, yeah, I'm going yet, you vote next one.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Malibu Planning Commission regular meeting for November 4th, 2024. This meeting is being held in both the hybrid format that allows members from the public to participate in person or remotely via Zoom. In-person participants, if you'd like to speak, please submit your request to speak form to the clerk before your item is called. Only in-person participants may donate or accept donations of time. Remote participants, if you'd like to speak, please join the Zoom meeting printed on the agenda and raise your hand in Zoom when the item you wish to comment on is called. Commissioners, when you have a comment, please raise your hand and I will call on you in turn so we can make our discussion clear for the record and for the public. May I have a roll call?
Commissioner Hill?
I'm here.
Commissioner Mazza?
Here.
Commissioner Pete?
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chair Smith?
Here.
Chair Leonard?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Adam, would you like to lead us in the pledges of allegiance, please?
I'd like allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Play ball.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with item 5A continued to November 18th, 2024. The balance as staff recommends.
Okay. Do we have consensus on that?
A second if need be.
Okay. All in favor?
Yes.
All right. May I have a report of the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on October 25th, 2024.
Okay, let's move on to written and oral communications from the public. Public speakers for items not on the agenda are in person or viral. Do we have any people in person?
We don't have any in-person speakers, but we do have some virtual speakers.
Okay. Who do we have first?
There's three hands. First is Larry. Go ahead, Larry. Are you here?
I am. Thank you. Hey Mazza, good evening. I'm addressing you as vice president of your group, the Malibu Township Council. Someone brought up John Cus Park after all this talk about Heather Cliff. The guy who appointed you, Steve Uring, told people at a candidate forum last week, there was no lawsuit that the MTC never sued the city of Malibu. But the MTC did sue. So Steve Uring lied, didn't he? Why would he do that? Here's a headline from the Malibu Times from 2009. "The City Gives the Malibu Township Council an Unusual Power," city attorney says, "by allowing the unelected body to have control over banning league play in the future at the park." John Mazza, you're the vice president of the Malibu Township Council. Your friend and the guy who appointed you said there was never a lawsuit. Was there a lawsuit? Why won't the MTC let children play games at the park? Why would you do this? Why would the MTC do this to our children? Why do you think this is okay? Please clarify this for the public, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Who do we have next?
Jeff.
Jeff, you there?
Uh, yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead. Try to talk loud, please.
Sure, sure. Thank you. Thanks, commissioners. Um, so, so city council has been sent a notice and a draft lawsuit that former staffer Adrian Fernandez is suing the city and several of you personally. You've all seen this. The council has less than 45 days to respond. Bruce, Steve, and the city manager were named personally. John and Craig will likely be added on after seeing their emails. You can't pretend this doesn't exist because it's election season, guys. It's going to be the first of many. If the council does decide to settle this case in what amounts to an admission that these guys and the MTC mob harassed, threatened, and bullied a guy in his job, I think you all should resign and show a penance. Not likely, because what else would the two of you have to do with your day when you aren't peeking over neighbors' fences and filing appeals? If the lawsuit progresses, the truth is going to come out. Public records, private emails, depositions of your friends, your family, and funders. Mazza, Craig Hill, Joe Drummond, Kirk Ham, Pat Healy, all the MTC members who you're currently telling the suit doesn't even exist. So who is going to pay their legal bills when they get called in? There's a lot of blame to go around for the systemic problem of abuse and lack of accountability here. Bruce, he released private medical information, and he has tried to explain that away. But like he always says, the law is the law. John Mazza disrespects planning staff, residents, and commissioners at meetings, taking meetings and trying to direct and guide their assessments. Craig Hill caught on this email saying, Adrian likes to bend over for developers. Bend over. He said that. He's definitely going to need a lawyer. And more troubling is, he goes on to say, "The project at 31864C level is a relatively small house, so might not make a good PR case." A good PR case? I mean, look, I am unaware of a situation where a private property owner anywhere would expect a submission to a public entity, and that public relations would play any part in securing government entitlements, casually suggesting mounting a negative PR campaign against a project he is supposed to be independently assessing. How many more of these are there? The city council is an appellate review body for the commission's decisions. It needs to maintain independence to do that. These and other emails will show that this is clearly being circumvented to forward a political agenda. Do you know how inappropriate this is?
Thank you. Next?
Carlos.
Carlos, you there? Hello, Carlos?
Carlos, you're unmuted.
Anyone else?
Joe Drummond?
Joe, are you there?
Hi, is this for me, Joe?
Yep.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just here to reiterate the fact that these people are calling in who are not from Malibu and who have been hired by these out-of-town pacs that are real estate developers that are smearing Bruce and Steve all over town. They just have no credibility. There is no lawsuit about the Trancas lot ever between MTC and the city. So that's all a lie. Steve Uring did not lie. He responded to you at that forum that there is no lawsuit with MTC and the city, now or never. And there's not one with Adrian, there's not one with, I mean, they're just making stuff up because they're hired by people from out of town who want to develop Malibu and support not Bruce and Steve, but the other incumbent, who we all know who it is. And we just, we won't take it, and we'll see what happens tomorrow. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe. Should go back to Carlos one more time?
Yeah, Carlos.
Is he still on?
He's unmuted.
Carlos, you there? Okay, let's move on. All right, Norm, are you wanting to speak on 2A?
Public comment.
Okay. Go ahead.
Honorable commissioners, I don't always agree with the position that individual commissioners take. However, I respect that position. It's important in our country that people have a right to disagree with others. We all don't see things the same way. Some of us know more about certain things, such as archaeology. Others know more about construction, about grading, about what it's like to be in the field and try and get something done. We all share in providing information to others, including other commissioners. I respect all of you for the hard work that you do. People don't understand how much time and energy you put into your job. You don't get paid, you spend a lot of time, and you do the best you can. And I appreciate that. I don't always agree, but I absolutely agree with your position where you are now, and I respect your comments and your ideas and thoughts about projects when they come up. So thank you for the amount of time that you spend every single day preparing for these meetings and trying to do the best you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. All right, let's move on to commissioner comments and staff comments. Who would like to go first? John, go ahead.
Okay, tomorrow we get to vote. Unfortunately, apparently Jeff, Larry, and Carlos don't get to. But I hope everybody votes. It's very important that people in Malibu participate in our affairs. And I read a piece a little while ago that said 80% of the people in Malibu are estimated to vote. That's really good compared to the rest of the country. I want to make a couple of comments. First, there is no lawsuit. Fortunately, we have our acting city attorney here today, and he can confirm that. All of this stuff is made up. Now, MTC and the field at Trancas. MTC represented the, as they always do, the people of Malibu. And in that case, they represented the people of Malibu West, who objected to having a field directly next door to their houses and condos. So it became a practice field by agreement with the city. And the city has a binding agreement with MTC to protect those residents as long as they want to be protected. Malibu Township Council represents a group of people who believe in the general plan, stop major developments like nuclear power plants in Malibu, freeways, causeways.
John, this is not on the agenda, so you can make a brief comment.
Well, okay, the comment was made, and I'm going to answer it. So that's what we do.
Whoa, 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 stop.
You cannot stop public comment.
I could stop comments for items that are not on the agenda.
This is what the comment is for, items not on the agenda. Okay, now.
I'll defer to the city attorney.
You can make a brief, the comment for items that are on the agenda is not for the commissioners, the council members. That's for the general public to raise things. The options for the council are to put it on a future agenda, to ask staff a question, or to make a brief comment about it. So I think we've covered that at this point.
Okay, then you are a staff person. Please confirm that there is no lawsuit. And I'm done with my comments.
Okay. Anyone else? Craig, go ahead.
Thank you for your kind words, Norm. I think we all appreciate them. Larry, or Jeff, whoever you are, wherever you are, I think we all heard you when you said essentially the same thing last week about me. It's still true that what you said grossly misinterpreted and misunderstood my comments. It's only a little different this week in that you've also now misquoted them, too. I did say that if you wanted to know the truth, you could contact me directly. Anybody can. And evidently, you don't care enough to hear the truth to even do that. So do call me directly, and let's not waste everybody's time. Let's see, I do have one other comment I'd like to make. Just a reminder that when staff says that you've checked with Coastal, that really what you've checked with one or two members of the staff, maybe. And that can be persuasive, but there's nothing dispositive about any opinion that you might get on the phone or in an email from the staff. It might be more persuasive if it were dicta offered in a hearing and the whole commission were present. And it might be somewhat persuasive if the staff could be explicit in saying something like, well, this language is in the code of dozens of cities all over the state, and this is how we've interpreted it all in all those other places. And even then, it might not be definitive, though, because Malibu is unique in some respects. So, you know, I think we just all need to keep in mind that when we hear Coastal said this, it's, well, we got a bit of a recommendation, but it's not like we're being told the law.
You wanted to clarify that's not a recommendation, that's an opinion.
It's an opinion. Yeah. Thank you.
Anyone else? Dennis, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Haney. Very nice of you. Way to go Dodgers.
Thank you. Skylar, or?
I just want to say that I appreciate the fact that we get to vote in our country, and I hope everybody goes and does it. I think that sometimes, no reeves for applause. I'm just a lucky person that was born here. But I just want to say that I was really cool. I saw some people going over to vote, and there was their first time voting, and they were super nervous. And I think that was all us at one point in our lives, and I just don't want to take that for granted. And I think it's really awesome that John pointed out that approximately 80% of the population of Malibu might be going to the polls during this election of eligible voters. It's really cool. So I'm very happy that Dodgers won the World Series.
Yes, go Dodgers. I want to bring one thing up. For some reason, I won't mention who, I get Freedom of Information Act requests like every 10 minutes and have to go through. I get over 250 emails a day. So I'd like to request that the city assign planning commissioners a city email address so we can keep our, my business, my public, and my private emails out of the mix and do all our business on city emails like city council members do.
That is something that's been brought up before. I think we can relay that to the city manager. If, in the meantime, I would suggest, I think Craig did this, create an email address that you only use for communications on the planning commission, and then you can keep it separate, even if it's not a city email address. It would at least keep separation from your personal email.
Do we have any comments from staff?
I want to thank Sal Lopez for filling in for me while I was away on a pre-planned vacation and enjoyed a snowstorm in Northern California. So it's snowing in October. Something Malibu doesn't have to deal with. Thank you.
All right, let's move on to the consent calendar. Do we have any commissioners that wish to pull any items from the consent calendar?
I had a brief question about 3B1.
And I have 3B2. So I move the, I move consent on 3B3 and 3B4.
Do we have consensus on that?
There's 3B52, right?
There is?
Yes.
So you moved the balance except for, what were the two that were pulled? It was...
3B1 and 3B2.
The minutes.
Oh, yeah. We have, we have to vote because there's minutes, correct?
Do we have minutes on for today?
Yeah, 3B5 is minutes.
3B4 is minutes.
Okay, all right.
Hold on.
Go ahead, Skylar.
I am recused on, I'm going to recuse myself on item 3B2. So I can step out for that if I need to. And then, or maybe not, I don't know, whatever Trevor wants me to do. And then, yeah, that's it.
Because we're pulling that item. Otherwise, you could just make the statement.
It is being pulled.
So when that item's called, then we can allow Commissioner Pete to recuse himself. What's the reason for recusal? Is it a financial reason?
Yes.
Yeah, then you would need to disclose it on the record if it's a financial reason. If it's because...
The only things that I had done some work for the customer are currently doing some work for them, unrelated, undergrounding some power line stuff. So that's it.
Okay. Not related to this project, but it's in a...
Potentially related to this project, yes.
Okay, so you're accusing your, for a potential financial conflict. Okay.
All right, so should we do a roll call on the other orders? All right, so should we do a roll call on the other items?
I believe the motion was for the consent calendar to be approved except for items 3B1 and 3B2. Is that correct, Commissioner Mazza?
I just wanted to do, don't we have to vote on minutes?
We actually clarified that with the city clerk's office, and city council is currently accepting those by a consensus vote. So, it's not necessary for that. When we do have time extensions as part of the consent calendar, I do need to have a motion for those because there's a resolution involved.
Okay, I consent.
Was there a second?
I'll second that. All right, everyone agree? All right, let's move on to...
No, I do not.
Okay.
We need to call it all in favor.
Okay. Go ahead, Dennis. Are you just voting in negative? Okay. All right, so should we move on to 3B1?
Wait, wait, do we take the vote? Or we...
Well, Dennis voted against, everyone else voted in favor.
Okay, did you get the vote?
I did. We haven't been doing a roll call vote. If they want to go by consensus, we've been letting them go by consensus. What would your preference be?
It's not a consensus vote, it can be an oral vote, so you just call all in favor. I opposed, nay, abstentions.
Can I ask, Dennis, what was your concern there?
We're talking about a septic tank. I get 3B1, but not 3B2. That doesn't make any sense. It's a waste of time.
We haven't heard those two items. This is on the balance of the consent calendar.
I just, that's fine. I just wondered what he was talking about.
Okay.
It's enough to have so many recues on.
All right, so let's move on to 3B1. 3B1 is an administrative coastal development permit, number 23-001, a site plan review, 24-001, and a demolition permit, 24-046, an application to amend a coastal development permit, number 20-069, for the construction of a new single-family residence and associated development, including a site plan review for heights over 18 feet, not to exceed 24 feet, on a flat roof. And the property address is 28926 Boniface Drive.
I don't think we need a staff report. I just wanted to say that I asked a legal question of staff six days ago and didn't get an answer or clarification yet. Maybe I should just ask it now, or Fletcher, if you have that in hand, you could present it, or want me to ask it again?
I believe you're talking about a driveway.
Yeah, I mean, and just so everybody's clear, this is an ACDP, not a CDP, because it falls nominally under one of the exceptions, one being for if it has driveways or access roads required by the fire department. And so, my question was, is it still, we have two driveways on this now. Does that still qualify for the exception as, are two driveways required, or would that theoretically kick this to a CDP?
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that.
Thanks.
We also have the applicant in attendance here, so you could help answer some questions. But this is an amendment to a previously approved CDP. The approved CDP maintains the two existing driveways, you know, and I think the second driveway that you're referring to is a gravel driveway, and so that's not being changed except for the very end part that's adjacent to the proposed residence.
Well, previously, there was a circular in front and then one down the east side of the lot, and now there's one down the east and down the west side of the lot. So, it just seems like, it was just a clarification of law, not of design or anything.
Yeah, I mean, again, the difference between this project and the one that we approved a few years ago, they both have the same two driveways. So, I'm not really understanding the question.
Well, the original one didn't have the one down the west side. It did have a circular one, which is theoretically still there, so maybe it's three driveways now. Now, we could get some clarification. Sorry to bring you down here, Lester, but please.
May I? Thank you. My understanding of your question, that Fletcher related to me when I bumped into him the other day, was that we can't have two driveways. My understanding...
It was a question.
Right, but the code, as I understand it, what you're referring to is when you're in an ESHA and you have a 10,000-square-foot pad maximum that you can design to, and they have a rule about you get to exempt one driveway and a hammerhead. That's the only place that I can find in the LIP, when you type in driveways, that it gives you a maximum or minimum number. Now, there used to be a circular driveway on the original plan, okay? We just kind of took it out just because, right? I don't want to have to put it back in because I don't think I'm required to by the code. There's, so that's all, that's how this happened. But the reality is, I don't see anywhere in the LIP where it says you cannot have more than one driveway.
Right, okay, thank you, Lester. And my question was not, can you have more than one? It's, what do you get the exemption for? Is it, if it says fire department required, are we saying in this case the fire department has required two separate driveways?
What?
No.
I don't think that, first off, I'm completely lost on that because there's no ESHA around here. I don't think any of that applies to this.
Yeah, there's not, no, I'm just saying, Craig...
Not about ESHA.
Also, you know, I sent you guys an email on Thursday saying if you had, you know, I gave you the little rundown. This is like, couldn't be more innocent of a project. And I said, "If you have any questions, here, call my cell. You know how to get a hold of me." Ironically, we had the same thing happen with the original project two years ago, where we got this 11th-hour thing, and I came up and said, "You guys know who I am. You have my number. Why do you wait till we come to these things to pull this stuff? I don't get it."
Sorry, Lester. My understanding was that I had a simple legal question that I had already asked, so I didn't feel like...
Hopefully, we answered it between the two of us. You can have two driveways, right?
Okay, hang on. Trevor, do you understand my question?
I'm not understanding. You're saying that it should not qualify for an ACDP because of the driveways?
It's just, I think it's a simple, innocent question. You get an exception to do an AC instead of a full CDP if it's just the fire department required access. Can the fire department require two separate accesses?
What are you...
Does this still fall under that exception if it's more than one required driveway?
Which exception are you looking at?
I'm looking at number four, driveways or access road improvements required by the fire department to improve access to properties damaged or destroyed as part of the Woolsey Fire that did not meet the criteria for a de minimis waiver.
Okay, sorry. What LIP sections are we in?
It's out of fire review.
It has nothing to do with that.
Yeah.
All right, well, this piece of code was cited in the original thing, so I was just reading what was in the citation, 13.13 and 13.29.
So, this is an ACDP, not a de minimis waiver, right? That's what we're putting forward? So, it falls under the ACDP provision, so we wouldn't be using the de minimis waiver provisions in this case. That's what's going on, right? This is a demolition and construction of a house.
That's correct.
Okay, so we're not in the de minimis waiver section.
Do you have any other issues, Craig?
Right, exactly. It says, because it does not meet the criteria for a de minimis waiver.
Yeah, so it's not a de minimis waiver.
We're not, it's not a Woolsey. Okay.
It's an ACDP, just a regular...
All right, so that would be the clarification. And in future, though, the fire department, the exception will be granted for one access road presumably, but the fire department doesn't require multiple driveways, right? That was my question. I'm seeing it's not applicable here now, so we're done. But in future, that is a question that might come up.
Good.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Shall we...
Sorry, Lester, I thought it was answered.
It's okay. All right, do we do a roll call?
Was there any public comment on this item?
We had the applicant, Stephanie Hauser and Adam. Do you guys still need to talk, or you feel comfortable?
Wrong one.
Oh, I'm sorry, wrong one. Okay, I'm so sorry.
No speakers for this one?
Okay.
We do not.
All right, should we do a roll call?
I think this is an ACDP, so unless there's...
This is an ACDP A.
Okay, so we don't need to...
So, you can state without objection, so there's no objections to it. So, we'll receive and file.
Receive and file.
Receive and file, please. Okay. Let's move on to number two. This is for ACDP 24-016, for an application to install a new on-site wastewater treatment system for 6722 Fernhill Drive.
Before we call it, Commissioner Peak is going to recuse himself for the items listed stated before the consent calendar was approved.
Okay.
Let's just give him a minute to step outside.
They call the applicant's name first.
I just wait for him to be, and then he went and asked for staff. Okay, he's now left.
All right, Fletcher, you want to give us a staff report on this?
It's not necessary to do that. That's not why I called it. I just want to disclose a conversation with Fletcher on this property. Upon inspection, Craig and I inspected this property from the street, and there is a trailer that's been converted into a guesthouse on the property. And then, further from that, I looked up the address and came up with a website that has, it apparently was for sale, they took it off for this, took the listing off temporarily, I guess. And they have a website that shows that the garage is converted into a living space, and there's other structures on the property, and there's a noncompliant, massively noncompliant hedge fence around it. So, and I'm just confirming with Fletcher. So, I called Fletcher and asked him what the story was. I may, and he said, "There is a remodel going on." Apparently, that's, I don't know if that's what Skylar's recused about or not, but it's my understanding that before this gets to CFO, that the noncompliant fence, garage, trailer, and other structures are going to be corrected. Is that correct?
Can we disclose what we're doing still?
No, that's the whole question, but yeah, okay.
Can we...
Yeah, let's get the report first. Go ahead, Fletcher.
Do we need to do disclosures first?
Yes, we should disclose. Sorry, there's no staff report on this one. It's just a consent item, but I'm happy to answer John's questions if now's the right time.
Well, I'll just say, mine is substantially similar. I took him to see the site on our round, so I observed similar things.
Okay.
Okay, so, yes, the property, I've actually processed a few applications on this property, and the remodel that I mentioned to John is that that's still ongoing, and so the items that he listed, hedge height, the garage being converted into habitable space, that's all part of, I'm sorry, the hedges will be trimmed as part of that approval, and so, and the garage, of course, is being relocated to the rear yard as a detached structure as part of that application. So, and there's also no trailer on that site plan, on the approved site plan, so there will be no trailer on that property when we go out there for a final inspection.
Fletcher, I don't want to get too far. If it's active code enforcement, these are issues that are being resolved through an additional application that could be mentioned, but that's not really what's before the council here, sorry, the commission here tonight. We're just looking at the ACDP for the septic, correct, OWTAS?
Sure. Let's move forward with that.
Fletcher, did we hear the remodel?
The remodel was an administrative plan review that was approved by the director about a couple years ago, I think.
Can you do that with a garage? Building new structures?
Yes.
All right, so, go ahead, Craig.
So, I, my email was about just resolving the fixture unit count on this because you need to have a number on this that's accurate. And I was also sort of confused because they would have had to replace the septic tank recently, the property sold in 2020 or 2021, and 1,000 would have been too little. So, are we doing two septic tanks in a matter of four years?
No, this is...
It hasn't been, it wasn't redone four years ago. Okay.
All right.
So, the fixture unit count, we're square on that? I don't know if we're counting the trailer or what, or, you know...
No, they said they're removing it.
Right.
It's not shown on a site plan.
Okay.
I have a question in regards to this, but first disclosures, I have none. On an ACDP, I'm sorry, on an ACDP, does that trigger bringing a property into compliance for all other development on it, or is it just isolated? No, it does not.
It probably depends on what the nature of the project is. You know, if the primary, it's a new primary residence, then the whole property is brought up to compliance. If it's a limited portion, then it doesn't involve that usually.
Okay.
I think the threshold is the 50%. Is it a remodel versus is it a new house?
Okay. All right, thank you. Dennis, did you want to do your disclosures, and then we could file this one?
None.
Okay. So, you guys ready for a receive and file on this? Okay, all right.
Do we have any speakers, or...
We have two speakers. Do you guys still need to roll good with it? Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Without objection, you say it was received and filed?
Yep. All right, let's move on to...
We got to get a commissioner back.
Okay, yeah.
Can someone bring Commissioner Peak back? Commissioner Skylar Peak, to be specific.
Somebody like peering in the door there? It wasn't Skylar.
You guys jam here, we can make it. All right, next up, we're going to a continued public hearing. We've got 4A, it's an administrative plan review, 23-093, and variance 24-014, an application to allow an emergency pullout area. This was continued from October 21st. This is for 27254 Pacific Coast Highway. Let's go ahead and do disclosures first.
I'll start, I guess. This was on the agenda a few weeks ago. I took John there, gave him a lift, saw that this site and others along the area have two tall fencing along PCH above it. It should be view permeable above 42 inches. And a few parcels over, I noticed several cars parked along the wall, rendering the effective width of the road less than 15 feet as it is. That's it.
I own a property that's fairly close to this property. I did verify that it is over 500 feet away.
Okay, I revisited the property, drove by, and I talked to, and I submitted a photograph of the view, and subsequent to that, Fletcher called me about what was the problem with the property, and we discussed the property. I found out that the property next door doesn't have a permit. It has the same type of development on it. Let's see, what else?
What picture are we talking about? Is this in the...
It hasn't been presented yet.
Do we have this photograph?
Photograph. And...
What is the photograph of?
The photograph is a Google street view from Pacific Coast Highway of that and its neighbor.
Okay.
And...
It sounds like we have that available if anyone wants to see it.
I'm going to ask him to show it. That's why I disclosed it. But the reason he called me is, at the instructions I received at our training, I had, I sent it to Steve McClary, who was, I was instructed was the only person I could talk to, and he apparently sent it on to Fletcher, and Fletcher called me. That's why I brought it up. And that's it.
I have to correct my disclosures. I did do a site walkthrough prior to the previous meeting. Commissioner Peak was, I think, was at that site walkthrough, and I did have a couple phone calls with the applicant's representative.
Did you learn anything that's not in the report? Did you learn anything that's not in the report?
No.
Okay.
I need to also disclose, prior to the previous hearing, I did ask the applicant a question about was their geology report? And he submitted, he sent me a letter that has now been submitted to the record for everybody.
Okay, anything you disclosed at the prior meeting, you don't need to rediscover again, so it's anything additional that you have since the last disclosure?
We didn't hear it.
We didn't actually hear it before.
Oh, it was continued before, okay, well, thank you for then making them.
Yeah.
As Drew mentioned, I visited the site with him and the applicant's representative. As John pointed out that he noticed there, I also noticed some of the adjacent development on that side, or like where the little hill is there. And I was unaware whether or not that was permitted or not, just acknowledging that I see it and it's there. And that's it.
Okay. Should we get Dennis?
Done.
Okay, can we get a staff report on this, please?
All right, good evening Chair Leonard and members of the planning commission. The next item before you tonight is a proposal for an emergency vehicular pullout area to improve emergency access along the private road serving the community at Escondido Beach Road. The project requires a variance for construction and associated grading on slopes steeper than two and a half to one. So here's a vicinity map showing the property, it's beachfront, and you have, it runs parallel to PCH. You've got, you know, the Escondido Beach Road, road easement there slicing through, you know, a good 20 homes or so. It's about the midpoint in that road, so. Here, here's a brief overview of the project description. We've got the grading that I mentioned earlier into an existing slope between, this is between BCH and the Escondido Beach Road, street easement. And the objective here is to construct retaining walls to provide that area. These retaining walls will not exceed six feet in height. And will widen the existing private road easement by 5.3 feet. Whoa, that's weird.
Wrong slide?
That's a strong, that's a wrong slide, anyway. Anyway, the second one is to install concrete pedestrian path steps between the retaining walls that are used to prepare, to create the space, and then it connects to an existing wooden hillside steps that go up to PCH. As I mentioned, this does include a variance for the grading on steep slopes, steeper than two and a half to one. Next slide. Okay, so this is site plan showing the proposed retaining walls. If you look closely, the kind of the faded gray, you'll see the existing stairs that go down the slope. It kind of goes at a, it kind of zigzags down the slope. And that upper portion will be retained in this case. And of course, everything just, you know, at the bottom there will be wiped out and replaced by those two retaining walls and a new concrete pathway and steps. This also shows the, you know, existing footprint of the residents, you know, closer to the water, and you also have a front property wall and the perimeter of the driveway, so. This also shows a cross section down below where it just, you know, illustrates the additional width you're providing to Escondido Beach Road. And of course, the height of the retaining walls and the kind of a cross section view of that concrete pedestrian path that will connect to the existing wooden stairs. And it also shows, you know, the gradient of the slope. So here's a image provided by the applicant. It's kind of a nice overlay, you know, satellite view showing the neighborhood and how the many homes there have development that encroaches into the 25-foot wide road easement. So it is very narrow, and it gets even narrower than 25 feet in many locations. You know, this has the proposed retaining walls highlighted there as well, so. We can come back with this if we want to later, of course. So I added some site photos. Let's see, this was taken probably a couple years ago. And the left one, of course, we're down at Escondido Beach Road, looking up at the slope, and that's the existing little pony wall, railroad ties, and then you have your wooden stairs that meanders up the slope. At the top of the slope, you'll see that construction fence, chain link fence, six feet tall with a construction tarp on it, so we'll get to that later, but that's a good image showing the non-view permeable fence. To the right is a view from the top of slope, showing the meandering staircase and kind of gives you a sense of the steepness of that slope. Towards the back, you can see the front of the residence and the driveway. Just behind that gentleman's staying on the road, and you can see that the existing driveway is not wide enough for even two cars, so it's tight. Some more photos here, taken from Escondido Beach Road, looking west on the left, you know, showing existing development that's built into the slope. And on the right, we're looking east, again showing similar development. And so, what's before you here is not even to that scale, it's just a an emergency turnout area, so it's not even new square footage. But this is just illustrating what's there currently. So we've had some correspondence this year about this project, mentioning the fire department at the beginning of the year. That's in the in the attachments on the staff report as well. But they did have a letter recommending, first of all, that they're okay with the project. And they also recommend at least one no parking sign posted on the proposed retaining walls. In September, we received four letters of support from neighboring property owners, including the two adjacent properties. You know, and they're all in support of the project. In early October, just before this was originally scheduled to come here, we received a letter from the California Coastal Commission that challenged our determination that the project is not located on a beach and exempt from a CDP. More recently, we received a letter from a concerned resident about the non-view permeable fence along PCH at the top of the slope. And due to that, we're proposing an amendment to the resolution before you hear. This would be inserted as condition number 27, indicating that the applicant shall remove the non-view permeable construction tarp on the chain link fence located at the top of the slope, adjacent to PCH. Compliance will be confirmed during final inspection by the planning department. Of course, the conditions after that will be resequenced accordingly. Okay, that wraps it up. In summary, staff asks that you consider the project for approval, adopting resolution number 2466 as amended to reflect the commission's decision. Thank you.
Thank you Fletcher. Go ahead.
If I'm, yeah, one more thing. Here, if you take a look at sheet C2 of 8 of 5, C2 of C5, there's cross section AA. If you take a look to the upper left side of that cross section AA, there's reference to an existing fence, but that existing fence is located outside of the property line. So appears to be on Caltrans property. That's subject to confirmation, of course, but if this cross section is accurate, that fence is not the responsibility of this property owner.
Question. There's about 400 feet of linear fence down that hill. It's all lined up, so that's, so you're saying that's all on Caltrans property and can be removed by Caltrans?
I'm saying this property owner would not be responsible for any non-conforming fencing, not on their property.
So
And this cross section shows that.
So if they put up the, if they put up a fence off of their property, that's a violation of Caltrans property.
Whoever put up that fence, it's on Caltrans property.
Oh, that's wonderful, thank you.
Okay.
But John's inference is on point, that you can presume, given these fences are all in a line and they're all parallel to the road, that they're all substantially within the easement, so you could theoretically go to Caltrans and say, there's 400 feet here that you guys can pull out? I don't know that they'd do that, but-
No, they would do that.
Would they do that, so they just don't know?
I mean, I think this is the perfect example of be careful what you wish for, and here you have, you know, this is replicative of what happened when people went and interfered with the MRCA fence on PCH down near Las Flores, and all of a sudden you are going to have an uproar because now you're raising an issue about a fence that belongs to Caltrans, Caltrans probably doesn't care that it's there or not. And if that fence got removed, every single one of those property owners right there would not be very happy. And they're going to look at this property owner and be even more pissed.
But would Caltrans not be subject to the same 42-inch limitation?
It's existing non-conforming.
I would highly doubt that Caltrans was the one that went and put the screaming on the fence.
But they own it now.
I think the point is, is that it's not our determination to-
It's not our position to have it removed.
Yes.
If you want the city to write a letter to Caltrans and say, hey, make sure your fence is compliant with our view permeable, you know, fencing that where you can clearly see the ocean from PCH, I would imagine that would happen very quickly.
Guys, let's get into the hearing, let's get into the hearing here and
I'm fully in the hearing right now.
No, we haven't opened the hearing yet.
It was just questions for staff.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. Go ahead.
Fletcher, do we know if the structures that are built in a similar area of where they're asking to pop out and create the widened area for turning around for emergency vehicles or whatever? Are either of those structures permitted? Or were they ever permitted? On either side?
I've lived there for over 30 years, I'm pretty sure those structures were there prior to cityhood.
When, oh come on, that house is new, the white one.
It's been there a long time, as long as I've been here.
I'm merely asking a question if you know that answer.
That was a part of the review for this application, so.
Well, when you and I talked, you looked at the house to the south and said it had no permits.
Well, yeah, during about a five-minute phone call, yeah, I looked in the database real quick, but it's, there's nothing in there, so. But we have to do a deeper search to really have a definitive answer for you.
Question of staff. Do we know, Caltrans has said that they're surveying what's in their easement along the highway. Does it come this far west, or is it mainly just eastern Malibu? When they do the survey?
In their presentation to the city the other day, they said they're going to do the whole city.
The whole city. So maybe we don't even need to think of it like this is just going to show up on their radar.
Let's move on and get this public hearing open. All right. We have applicant, do they want to do a presentation? Jamie, go ahead. You have 15 minutes.
Good evening Chair Leonard and good evening fellow commissioners. I am here tonight representing the Betsy Eisenberg Trust, which is the owner of the property. Tom is here as the owner tonight, in case we need him. Samantha Widmer also is representing the project through Traverse, I'm here as a consultant. When we were notified that there was an issue with the green netting on the fence, the owner, Tom, basically said, I have no issue removing it. So we volunteered to Fletcher today to have it removed, and then it became a condition of approval, which we have no objection to. What's interesting with this project is that because the slope we're excavating into to make the street a little bit wider at this property, if it wasn't steeper than two and a half to one, we wouldn't be here tonight. Unfortunately for us, it was steeper than two and a half to one, so we went with the survey, we submitted a project that was probably over two, we've been into this for two years now. What we're creating is a five-foot, three-inch pullout for traffic, not traffic, but for cars on that street. If you're familiar with that street, if there's a trash truck, a large delivery vehicle, they can't pass each other. Too many of these properties have encroached into the right of way with their retaining walls, with their trash enclosures, so it's very difficult for two cars to pass each other. Tom, the owner, wants to widen it at the toe of his slope so that a car can pull over, so another car, an emergency vehicle can pass, they can pass each other. This is not intended, it is certainly not wide enough for parking. A parking space has to be, I believe, nine feet wide by 20 feet long. This does not meet that, we can't meet that, we'd have to excavate all the way back to the highway, we'd have to put in soldier piles. The development would be enormous, so we just, we looked at how far back can we go, which was five foot, three inches, with conventional footings for a conventional retaining wall, not to exceed six feet in height. So again, this is a five-foot, three-inch encroachment excavation into the toe of the slope so that a car can pull over and let another car pass by. The fire department will require, and we're in agreement, that a no parking fire lane sign shall be posted so that people don't park in that area. Otherwise, we're here to answer questions, and off the subject, I agree with John Maza, I would really like to see an email address for all the planning commissioners with the city, it'd be easy to remember, I've had a lot of emails returned because the emails' addresses have changed, but if there was say, a jmaza@malibu-city.org, easy to remember, I would appreciate that. Thank you, and we're here for questions.
Okay, you have 12 minutes and 6 seconds left. Samantha, did you want to add anything to it? Okay, do we have any public comments?
No, there's no hands on Zoom.
Okay. All right. I guess no applicant rebuttal. Yeah, let's go ahead and close the hearing.
There's no rebuttal from the, I think, where you want to add.
All right, all right, let's return to the commission for deliberation. Who would like to go first? Craig, go ahead.
I have a question about Coastal's letter, and it's their concern about this being on a beach. It's hard to understand how this is a beach. Yes, it's a beachfront lot, but the lot covers several different kinds of terrain. So I'm just wondering, what are they leaning back on to justify this or explain this? I looked in the LIP to see if there was a definition of beach, and strangely, there isn't, but there is a definition of sandy beach, which sort of implies that maybe there are other kinds of beaches that are non-sandy beaches, or, I don't know. But what are we, what should we take from the Coastal letter? It seems sort of nonsensical to me. How do we interpret it favorably to Coastal? What are they saying?
Do you want me to jump in? So there's no question that the exemption applies in this case, I believe the exception, they're calling me, there's an exception to the exemption on this case, and they're saying under Sorry.
I can quote it if you-
B1A, it doesn't apply if it's, if improvements to a single-family structure, if the structure or improvement is located on a beach, and that's what they're relying on. And I would agree with you, I think that the interpretation is nonsensical in this case, and also would, what I understand, would strongly, would be a departure from how this has been interpreted for over 20 years, and so it would run into due process issues for people if we were to change an interpretation that's been, I've applied to that for so long.
I'm just concerned about, you know, us saying yes and getting it sent to Coastal and delaying them another two years.
Well, it would delay them if we had to go and process the Coastal development permit, so.
Go ahead John.
The way it appears to be interpreted by what you just said is, if you have a house and you don't, you don't do anything to it over 50%, and it's not the front, in the front of the house, you don't have to get a Coastal permit. And that isn't my recollection of how we've been handling it for the last 30 years. You have to get a Coastal, we've given- You have to get a coastal. We've given hundreds of coastal permits in those cases. Now, so just because you build a wall on the beach doesn't mean that the beach disappears. And that's where I think Coastal's coming from. But my question would be, Coastal, send us a letter. And at the last pity, we were told, well, we met with Coastal and we didn't come to an agreement. And I assume that nothing has happened since. So Coastal is still saying this is a beachfront lot. Is that correct?
The issue is, I think there's, isn't a debate that the residence would qualify as being on the beach, correct, in this case? The issue is that the improvements that are being put forward are not located on the beach. They're actually across the road. So there's no debate that the improvement itself is not located on the beach, and that would be our interpretation.
But then, but then, as you read it, it was an improvement to a house. Well, this is a parking spot, half of a parking spot. It's not a house, it's a retaining wall.
It qualifies as an improvement to a single-family residence, so...
So if you put in a parking space, that's, you repave your parking space, you move it, that's an improvement to a house? Is that what you're saying?
It depends on what the project is. I mean, you know, is it located in ESHA?
Listen, Tyler, go ahead, Tyler.
Yeah, thank you, guys. So the exemption that we apply to these projects is for improvements to existing single-family residences. And the exception that Trevor just read is when the improvement, basically, the way the Coastal Commission staff is interpreting it is because the primary structure is located on the beach, all of the accessory development is an improvement to the existing single-family dwelling, which is on the beach. Therefore, that exemption, CDP exemption, can no longer apply. So what they explained to us is, for the last 30 years, their interpretation of that code section is that beachfront properties are basically explicitly cannot be used under that exemption.
Right. That's what I'm asking, and you've explained it. They are claiming that your beachfront's your beachfront. You build something on the sand, it's beachfront.
It's not just, it's not just if the development's on the sand, because in this case, I don't think they, I don't think they disagreed that it wasn't on beach sand. They don't disagree that the improvement in this case was not on the beach. It's because the primary structure, which in this case is the single-family residence, is on the beach. And this is an improvement to that single-family residence, and that's what the exemption speaks to.
Okay, so my question, Trevor, is there a superior agency?
No, they're not a superior agency to us. We are the primary...
This is appealable to them, and...
No, this is not an appealable project because it's not a, this is not a coastal development.
Well, if they're claiming it's appealable, it's appealable.
I don't want to get too far down the road into our legal jurisdictional arguments on it. But the fact of the matter is, you know, our interpretation is that, the same as it has always been, that their interpretation, new interpretation, they have brand-new put out there that this, anytime you have a single-family home that's located on the beach, anything done to that property, whether that improvement is on the beach or not, has to get a coastal development permit, is new, and we would... Staff's recommendation is that we do not depart from our prior interpretation, that what matters is the location of the improvement, not the location of the primary structure.
And my question, just anything other than the front wall of the house would be under that interpretation?
There's a definition for improvements in the LIP.
Yeah, so in this case, the retaining wall is not attached to the house at all, right? So they're saying accessory development that's not attached to the house is also subject to, or are not subject to this exemption.
Question. So just to clarify where this boundary is. If I came in and I said, I want to expand my two-car garage to four, but it's part of the structure on the beach, then that would need a CDP. But if I said, I want to build a separate new two-car garage that's not touching my beach house, but is a little inland from it, that would be an ACDP?
Not an ACDP, it's an APR. It's exempt from a coastal development permit. And the ridiculousness of the interpretation can be, if you have a lot, imagine a lot that is on the beach, but extends two miles into inland, and you put it at the very end. Their interpretation would be that that improvement, even though it's miles from the beach, would still need a coastal development permit, it would not be exempt. So to say that it's arbitrary based on whether a small lot or a big lot doesn't really make intuitive sense. What matters is, are you developing on the beach? That's the whole purpose of this exception, is that there's not some kind of improvement being made on the beach sand. It's not happening here, and that's why staff is suggesting that we keep the interpretation of this.
Go ahead, Skylar.
I don't know if I have support, but I'd like to approve Adam Foray.
I have other questions.
Second?
And I just wanted to add in there the comment, and I was going to ask Trevor about that while we're discussing it. I would be reluctant to add the language about removing the, as much as I would want to see the view corridor there, but I'm just reluctant to require a property owner that doesn't own the fence to do something to the fence. That's my only concern. And that really solely relies on whether or not the property line is where they say it is, and that the fence is merely Caltrans's fence. And I just, I don't want to require you guys to go and do something to somebody else's stuff.
Do you want to add that to your...
Yes, I would, well, that's why I'm asking for Trevor for a little clarification on that.
Yeah, I would not recommend requiring additional development to happen that's not on their property. And I don't believe the resolution as proposed includes that condition. Is that correct?
He did add it.
That's correct. So here's what I would add. I would add language in there that says, if there's the fence that's located on their property, like, let's say that Caltrans takes down their fence, and then they want to put in another fence there, that any fence located on their property meet, basically, the top of that little hill by the highway is a view corridor. You know, so I don't think that that should be obstructed at all, is the point that I'm getting to, and I would imagine that you guys have no objection to that from the applicant? I'm hearing they have no objection to that. I just want to be clear about the location. That's it. Sorry, that was long-winded.
Okay. I mean, you're just saying that any fence on the property shall comply with the view permeability requirements of the city's municipal code? Is that what you're looking for?
That's correct.
And the LIP.
So is Dennis, is your second stand with that?
Yes.
And that would be to adopt Resolution 24-66, that's the correct one, with that modification, added additional condition that says, any fence located on the property shall comply with the view permeability requirements of the municipal code and local coastal program.
Trevor, you're very eloquent.
That's all you.
John, did you go ahead?
Okay. I guess we don't need to show the picture since you've already put it in your resolution. Question of staff. Staff report says this hill, whatever it is, it's 35 feet high. Coastal defines a bluff, coastal bluff is 10 feet or more. And all, and many of the properties, at least to the north of that and adjacent, are considered coastal bluffs. So why is this not a coastal bluff? And the reason I ask that is you're not allowed to put stairs on a coastal bluff or dig into it.
It's my understanding that this is a manufactured slope to create PCH.
Why would you say that? Do you think PC, they piled up a 35-foot-high berm to put a highway on, and then they kept increasing it until it got to 100 feet? Can you show the picture, the, from the, you showed a picture before of the property looking at the hill? Well, there's the view I turned in, by the way. That shows the view. But I'm saying, you, on your presentation, you showed a plan of the neighborhood, a photograph of the neighborhood. No, 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 it was from the ocean, looking at the thing, and it had all the lot lines on it. It was on your presentation. There you go. Now, they didn't pile, Coastal did not pile that pile of dirt all the way up the side of the hill. They cut it down.
Caltrans, you mean?
Caltrans. When they built the highway.
I think they did a great job shaping that part of the road.
They, this is, this got graded. Can you go back to where the stairs were, please, that other picture? Oh my God, this thing's nothing. What are you guys talking about?
10,000 years ago, there was a hill there.
10,000 years ago, we were in the ocean right here.
The difficulty that you have is that this is speculative. We don't know.
Oh, yes, we do. It's, the houses right across the street are on the highway level. They didn't make a pile and make a mountain so they could put a house on top of it.
We don't know.
Yes, we do. It's a mountain.
I have a comment. Does the city have a map similar to like an ESHA map of coastal bluffs?
Yes. And houses north of this, every single one of them is on a coastal bluff.
But this one, but this is, but this is not on a coastal bluff, so...
Well, how do you say that? It's over 10 feet, it's under the definition of a coastal bluff.
The water's not hitting it.
Well, it's not identified on the map.
Have you looked at the map?
I have not, I'm asking you.
I've never seen such a map.
Okay, well, you just said that, John just said they have one.
There's a definition of coastal bluffs. The houses, for example, Joffre's is on a coastal bluff. It's seven houses north of this, okay, or eight. Did all of a sudden the coastal bluffs just disappear?
One more time, is there, is there a map that the city uses to identify coastal bluffs?
Well, if you remember the discussion on the motel at the city council...
No, we're not going back to that because that wasn't the determination of...
I have a question. John, John? John? Is there a map of that, yes or no, of coastal bluffs? I haven't, I haven't seen it, so...
I haven't seen it either.
I'm not aware that it exists.
Do you think there's a map, do you think there's a map of Paradise Cove with the bluffs on it?
My point is that you're not answering the question.
Yes, there is a map. It's called LIP. Map, maps, there's one for zoning and one for, one set of five maps. This is map number three, okay? And those are on there.
Can I ask the applicant to come up? Can you tell me, sir, all the years that you've been doing work on our city, have you ever seen such a map?
Just a little reference, I've been doing this since 1982, specifically Malibu only since 1991. I've not seen a map that designates coastal bluffs. It's basically, in my opinion, a vertical slope that goes down to a sandy beach, not a slope. For instance, Malibu Road, everything on the other side of Malibu Road would be considered a coastal bluff if you use that determination. I'm sorry I'm going to say something because it bothers me. I know all of you. The problem we're having here tonight is we're trying to create a safety pullout with the applicant and his neighbors. And there's, I feel there's resistance to it. That's why we see a lot of non-permitted development in Malibu. People watching this tonight are going to be afraid, I shouldn't even say this, and I'm going to regret it, but people are saying to themselves, why am I submitting for a project that is going to be vetted when all of my neighbors have already done it without permits? Why am I trying to do this the right way and permit it when I'm having this opposition? I'm sorry, I apologize, but I had to say that.
All right, Chair, we should not go back unless we have a factual question.
Well, I think we're going to stick to questions.
I have a question of applicant then.
Okay.
We really shouldn't be going back to these, you have to ask the chair to be able to go back to the applicant.
I have a question, this should be our procedure, okay? May I ask the applicant a question?
Okay.
May I ask Jamie Harnish a question?
Yes, you may.
Please. Jamie?
Yes, Chris, I'm Maza.
Do you consider Joffre's on a coastal bluff?
I do because there's no houses below it, and there's not a road below it.
Yes, there are.
What I'm thinking of Joffre's, I don't see that there's a road.
Yeah, there are homes below it.
Pardon me?
There are homes below it. Yeah. Okay, I think we need to move on to, thank you, Jamie.
Okay, then, then I've got a couple more questions.
I think Jamie made a very good point. This is actually a very benign project, and we're like making this...
I think Jamie made the point, and I hate to say this because I really like Jamie, and I think he's a very honest expediter, okay, to say to a planning commission, the reason why Malibu screwed up is because if you have to get a permit and your neighbor cheated and got away with it...
John, this is...
No, I get to speak, you recognize me, and I'm...
I know, but this is not relevant to this application.
Oh, it isn't?
Whether people decide not to get permits because of the process?
We just had testimony on it. We just had testimony on it. Trevor, did we just have testimony on this, and may I comment on that testimony? In other words, may I comment on something an applicant says in testimony?
I thought he testified about Joffre's. I was really unclear why we were reopening the public hearing to hear about Joffre's. I mean, the issue here is the application we have here, and if you have evidence there's a coastal bluff on this property, you know, you can raise, you can identify it from the record, and you can hear testimony.
I have identified it in the record. It's under the definition of coastal bluff.
To be clear, I think what John is saying is it is the same bluff here or there. That's what he's...
Same bluff. If it's a bluff, seven houses north of it, it's a bluff here if it's over 10 feet.
Okay. My recommendation generally, after the public hearing's closed, if you have questions, ask the staff, but not to bring back the public into it. Then we run into issues with, was everyone getting a chance to respeak? Are we reopening the public hearing?
May I ask you a question then?
Me?
Yes.
Yeah, you don't have permission for that one.
I've been coming to these meetings for over 30 years. I have never heard that one before. Don't ask the applicant questions. I've never heard that one before.
After, after the public hearing is closed, we have said that before?
Never heard that comment from any staff member or chairman.
I believe you have.
We do, unfortunately, we've been doing it all the time, which is, I guess, is a mistake.
And I would tell you, be consistent in my experience.
Yes, I'm consistent. I'm doing what we've been doing for 30 years.
That would be, this advice, be consistent.
I'm being consistent.
All right, Skylar, go ahead.
I'm going to take a contrary approach to what John's comment was about that, that I think that Jamie, the point that Jamie brought up about the permits versus non-permits, and people doing things for what is relatively a small thing about that, is actually extremely relevant to the fact that that's, when people are put through this insane, laborious process, that's what drives what's exactly being referenced. And I think that we can all see a little bit of that light here. Like, it's super difficult for somebody to spend probably well over two years, based on the fact that we got staff photos that are two years old, over two, less than six-foot retaining walls, to make a small road safer that has support from multiple neighbors. It's really hard for me. I think it's really hard sometimes for the public to wrap their head around that. I know that we want to do things that are compliant, and this should not take away from the fact that ultimately, doing the right thing is absolutely getting a permit and going through the process. It's just really difficult when it's the same process to do that as it would be if he was doing some sort of larger structure there, remodel or something like that. And, you know, there can be different variations of that depending on how extensive that is, but, I mean, I think for hearing that our city attorney is taking the position that the staff has done this completely compliantly and completely disputed what the coastal interpretation was, and gave us the outlying example of why it wouldn't be interpreted that way. I think that we have to stick with that, and we have to trust that. And I think that we need to move forward on that. It wasn't like Coastal, to my knowledge, raised an issue, and they were calling this a coastal bluff. They were raising the issue of...
Okay, I got it. Listen, I'm calling time on this hearing.
You are calling time, you're ending discussion on something where, one of our commissioners said, one of our commissioners said, if it's a small project, shine it and just go ahead and do it.
If you want to make, if you want to make a, if you want to make a competing motion, let's go ahead and make it, and then we'll take a vote. I think that we're discussing topics in nauseam that we've already covered.
Well, I want to ask the city attorney a question. Is there a line where you can say, gee, this is so rinky-dink that just go ahead and violate the code that requires you to get a permit because it's a small deal and it might take you two years, so just forget the law?
Of course, we never forget the law. We don't do that. Some things can be interpreted differently. Some may see something as a coastal bluff, some may not. And, you know, I think you've raised the issue. I think you... And, you know, I think you, you've raised the issue. I think you've presented what evidence there is out there and then it's for the, the commission here to, to vote and decide what, if they see the evidence is supporting the project or if they can't make the findings and the evidence does not. Yes. Oh, was that for me?
A suggestion. John, clearly you don't have the vote. You, you do have this concern on the record. So if somebody's gonna appeal it, it's, it's, you've already put it on the table. They can chew on it.
Well, I'm not, I'm not discussing whether it's a bluff or not or on the record. I'm, I'm discussing the fact that we actually have commissioners say, gee, look the other way, it's a rinky-dink project. And that's, that is, that is not, we're not a legislative body. It's up to the coastal.
There's no findings for, there's no findings for a coastal bluff. I think that we've discussed this part of it enough. If you have another port, another thing that you'd like to discuss, let's go to that. Skylar, go ahead.
I, I just want to be very clear that what I was saying was that the process in regards to this sometimes can feel laborious, and I was very clear to say that it absolutely is the right thing to get a permit for it. I'm saying that like, just as like a comment, sometimes you wish it was simpler on something that to the public appears as being a relatively simple permit. But because it's on the beach, it, it's a little bit more difficult. And I'm just trying to bring us to the reality that like, the way that I see the project, it complies. And I don't, if I was shown something else that showed me otherwise, I could very, you know, I could be persuaded. But with the evidence that's been put forth for us, that's why I made the motion.
I think, as I said, John, if you have another argument that you'd like to make, besides, as I said, we don't see findings for a coastal bluff.
I gave you the, the definition of a coastal bluff. If you don't want to follow it, fine, sign with me.
Anything else you'd like to bring up?
Yeah, I just think it is counterproductive when, when we've been instructed by the city council to try to move things along, to send things to appeals. I just think it's crazy.
I have one last question. So is there any part of this hearing besides us denying that there's a coastal, not a, becoming an agreement that there's a coastal bluff here that calls for this project to be appealed?
Yeah, coastal, coastal commission wrote us a letter all about it.
I think we've gotten clarification on that, too.
From our, our attorney, not from their attorney.
We're here to, Trevor, do you want to?
I mean, you've heard with the, the stance of the coastal commission, I think Tyler has fairly represented it. I tried to do so as well. He was the one speaking with their staff. I think I've shared why staff and our office disagree with that interpretation and why we want to move away from our consistent interpretation of the past. So that's everything. You can call for the question.
Let's go ahead and take a vote?
Confirmed, the, the motion was to adopt the resolution 24-66 with the addition of a condition stating that any fence on the property should comply with the new, with the view permeability requirements of the Seas of Municipal Code and local coastal program. Correct.
Okay. Rebecca, please.
Commissioner Pete?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yep.
Commissioner Hill?
I'm staying.
Commissioner Mazza?
No.
Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We're skipping 5A. We're gonna move on to 5B. 5B is a coastal development permit number. Yeah, why don't we go ahead and take a break? We'll meet back at 6 minutes. Is that enough for you guys? 8 o'clock? Okay, meet back at 8 o'clock. Thank you. All right, next up we have coastal development permit number 20-056, variance number 20-024, 21-027, and 24-022. It's a site plan review, number 21-017, and a minor modification of 21-009. I'm gonna stop there. This is for 5610 Canyon Dune Road. This is in an appealable zone. It's for a single-family residence. Quick, get a, let's see. Do you have disclosures on this one? Who wants to go first?
I, I guess it was Friday. Craig and I, Thursday, visited the lot without, I walked the lot. I observed story poles over, over the edge of the two-to-one slope. Other than that, nothing that wasn't in the staff report.
I went by the site today. Of course, I've driven by. Everything was blown down. So the story poles, which I don't believe are story poles, they're wood structures. And I don't know why we, somebody lets us use those. And the tape that they used, or whatever string they used, they used survey tape with stringers on them. I don't think you're allowed to do that. I think you're supposed to use a one-foot mesh so you know what you're looking at. And I didn't see what I was looking at. And with everything blown down, I don't know how much I can talk about this.
Skylar?
I, I visited the site today with the applicant. We met there this afternoon. I did observe the knocked-down story poles. Looked like they were blown down in the wind potentially. The applicants, I met with the owner and the architect and their representative. And they also said that there's, somebody might have vandalized some of them. They weren't, they weren't really sure about that. For me, what I saw, it looked like wind, but there was also a power panel that was knocked over as well. I don't know if that was before or not, temporary power panel. And that they indicated there seemed to be some concern with one of the neighbors over a dispute on some driveway access, but they seem to have resolved that and it was in their favor.
Renika, do we have pictures of what the story poles look like?
Yes, they are included as attachments to the staff report.
So we do have that. So the, the, the commission should make a determination though if it's able to go forward or if it needs the.
Trevor, I think that there might be some concern potentially from the public about that, but I can't speak for that unless we have somebody here that's raising that issue.
Okay.
I just want to add to your, your disclosure that we noticed the power panel on the ground, but it had been sawn off. It was there on Thursday and it, it had no, no meter, no connections, no, nothing. It was just a stump.
Before the wind.
Before the wind.
And in addition, I saw that the area where the driveway would be has stress fractures in the ground indicating slumping or shearing off the edge of the slope by the driveway. That it's immediately adjacent to a large-scale landslide remediation project. So there may be a relationship there. I saw that the story poles, and I guess you see that, you can see this in the photos, but they block the view of faraway mountains from the scenic road technically. And I can get into this, the site meets the definition of a primary ridge line. Not consequential, but in the staff report, in the table on page nine, the height is listed as 28 feet. I didn't, that's a typo. I didn't have time to check. I don't think that's in the resolution. And finally, before I forget, before this comes back, if this comes back or in future for other applications, can we insist on having PDFs that are rendered as reusable? These, these seem to have been like static JPGs or something, so it's very hard to, like on an iPad, you, oh, you couldn't just zoom in and see without losing so much resolution that you couldn't read the numbers. And normally we get PDFs that, that work properly.
The problem with that is that file would be like
Huge.
500 megabytes.
Split it into a few files then. I mean, norma- normally what we get is fine on big projects, so this one was different.
Are you referring to the figures in the report or the attachments?
Offhand, I can tell you for sure the attachments. I'm not sure about the report per se.
I drove by on Friday and stopped on the side of the road and took a look at it from outside. All right, I think that's it. Could we get a staff report, please, Renika?
Of course. Good evening, Chair Leonard and members of the planning commission. I want to first disclose that I'm getting over a cold, so I'm gonna do my best to articulate as clearly as possible for the record. The item was already introduced. I'm gonna skip forward. Okay. So the subject parcel is located near the city's northern property boundary. The property is zone RR5 and is one of a three-lot subdivision, one lot of a three-lot subdivision that was approved by the county and subsequently approved by the coastal commission. And I think it was in 1990. And depicted here is the, a close-up view of the subject parcel, which is an irregularly shaped vacant lot on the east side of Canyon Dune Road, which is an LCP designated scenic highway. A majority of the site slopes has steep slopes that descend to the north and east from the building pad. There is a mapped blue line stream on the property located immediately north of the subject parcel. And because the 100-foot buffer from that stream lands on this site and because the project proposes fuel modification within that area, the property, the project is appealable to the coastal commission. The appeal jurisdiction is depicted as orange on the slide. The, the fuel modification also encroaches in the 100-foot parkland buffer. The parkland is depicted in green here. I believe it's the Santa Monica Mountains National Recreation Area. Because the fuel modification also encroaches in that, in the parkland 100-foot buffer, the applicant has requested a variance. And here's the, the project description, which includes, oops, I meant to, let me do that. Okay. A new single-family residence, a little over 7,100 square feet, which includes an attached three-car garage. It also includes landscaping and hardscape grading. And I did want to note that the grading number depicted in the conformance table, table was outdated. The supplemental report was issued, I think, on Friday, which included the updated grading plans. And the corrected grading quantity is 734 cubic yards as opposed to the 435 that is quoted in the staff report. The project also includes a driveway and a fire department turnaround area, a new on-site wastewater treatment system, and a biofiltration system. As previously mentioned, the project includes a host of discretionary requests, including variances for slopes, construction on steep slopes, a variance for development within the ESHA buffer, a variance for fuel mod within the parkland setback, a site plan review for height above 18 feet, and you are correct, it is a 24-foot-high residence, not 28. And the application also includes a minor modification request to reduce the required front yard setback. Depicted here is the slope analysis, and this is a little outdated. I am gonna follow up with the more current site plan. But this shows the, the slopes that dominate the site to the north and east. The blue represents the, the three-to-one, bless you, the three-to-one slopes. And only the retaining wall associated with the proposed driveway and Hammerhead are cited, is cited. And only the retaining wall associated with the proposed driveway and hammerhead are cited, is cited on slopes that are, um, two-and-a-half to one. Depicted here is the current site plan, again highlighting the, the red, um, wall, which is the wall that requires the variance request. I also wanted to note that, um, the pool was not, was, has been removed from, um, the project. I believe there's certain site plans that include a pool, but that has since been removed from the project scope. So this project, um, was considered by the ERB a couple of times, as was discussed in your staff report. The first time the project was reviewed, um, the, one of the ERB members noticed respouting oak woodland that came after record rains after the Woolsey fire. So the project site was required to be reassessed, uh, for the ESHA. Depicted here shows, um, the original ESHA delineation, which is pretty consistent with what's in the LCP that's delineated in red. And after the site was reassessed, um, that ESHA delineation was upgraded to that, which is shown here in green. Depicted here is the, um, encroachment of the proposed fuel modification zones within the ESHA buffer. Um, the project will, will include, um, direct impacts to oak woodland, which the applicant has, um, agreed to mitigate through the payment of in-lu fees to the Santa Monica Mountains Conserv, uh, Mountains Conservancy, excuse me. The project will also be required to mitigate the loss of a native tree, which was removed without the benefit of permits. Depicted here are the project elevations. And the next three slides include photos of the story poles. And I went out a couple of weeks ago, and the poles were still there, so maybe something happened during the winds. This is a photo of the story pole installation, um, looking east. And this is looking northwest.
And these are from quite a while ago, 'cause those...
Yes, that is correct. Yeah. But I did go check to make sure the poles were still installed a couple of weeks ago, and they were still up.
Still up on Thursday.
Okay. And so, um, as mentioned, the project was reviewed by the Environmental Review Board. At the second review, um, there was a request about reciting, or recommendation to re-site the house. So in response to that recommendation, um, the applicant has considered, um, re-siteing the house further back, which would have required, um, additional landform alteration and construction on steep slopes. Because the Scenic Resource Protection Chapter, which is Chapter Six, requires, um, an analysis of what is visual, um, what the visual impacts would be from the residence. The applicant has prepared, um, a visual analysis, which I'll kind of go through here briefly. Here, here is shown the proposed height at 24 feet with a 14-foot setback, which is what is, what is requested. This is showing the 24-foot height building with, that complies with the setback of 23 feet. This graphic shows an 18-high, foot-high building with the reduced setback of 14 feet. Oh, I did the wrong one. Oops. Oh, I think I had them out of order. My apologies. This is 24 feet with the reduced setback. 24 feet with the full setback. Okay, 18 feet with the reduced setback, and 18 feet with the full, um, compliance setback. Yes, this is 18 feet that complies with the setback. And this is 18 with the reduced setback. It looks like the difference is they shrunk the building by about two feet, the depth of the building from Canaan Dune Road. Today, staff has received correspondence from two individuals, the first of which is the property owner, located north of this, um, project, where she initially had concerns about, um, obstruction of blue water views. And she has since withdrawn that opposition. I did include photos that she provided in your packet, and I also included our correspondence where she originally had concerns and subsequently, um, withdrew her opposition. And we did also receive an email from another neighbor. I believe she owns a vacant property in the area where she just wanted to make sure, um, the beauty of the area is preserved. And that does conclude my presentation. Um, the, uh, planning staff is requesting that the commission, um, consider, um, the analysis provided to you in this oral report and the written report in your packet, and make a decision to either approve or deny the project. If the commission chooses to approve the project, there is a draft resolution included as attachment one to your staff report. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Renika, wasn't there a comment letter from, uh, the Slow Growth Coalition or whatever they're called?
No, I not, I have, oh, unless it came today, and I missed it.
I seem to get, remember getting one.
I believe Pat Healy sent a letter to us.
Oh, did she? I, that was an oversight of my part.
Okay, I have another question. On the, on the Chapter Six review, um, let me just find it. On section B of Chapter Six, it said, it says, "Chapter B1, 'The height of structures shall be limited to minimize impact of visual resources. The maximum allowable height, except for beachfront lots, shall be 18 feet above existing or finished grade, whichever is lower.'" How do we, how do we reconcile that with a house that's higher than 18 feet?
Yes, thank you for that question. I believe that same section also includes language that talks about height above 18 feet, subject to a site plan review.
Can you show me where that is? Or tell me where that is? Because I don't see it.
That would be under the, that would be under the SPR section.
Oh, it's not under the, under 6.5?
Somebody in this room has the code memorized, right?
We're looking at six points.
Yeah, I'm looking, six point pi B1. First sentence of C, B1. That's what I just read you.
Oh, yeah, and then it goes on to say, um...
Oh, I see. Okay.
Okay.
No, that says on beachfront lot. Oh, okay, never mind.
Okay. Should we go, uh, to, uh, public comments?
In the public hearing?
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have any speaker cards?
Applicant.
Okay. Uh, applicant, would you like to do your presentation?
You have to open it.
I'm sorry.
Gotta open our public hearing, sorry. Thank you, Chair Leonard and Commissioners. My name is Joe Fels. I'm, uh, working with the project team on this, uh, project for approximately the last year. I should start with, uh, first of all, I'd like to thank, uh, Renika for all of her help over the past year. It's been, uh, she's very professional and very helpful, and, uh, we're happy to be here in front of the chair and the, and Commissioners. So thank you for that. I just want to introduce our team very quickly. Uh, we have our project architect, Mr. Lee. We have owner's representative, Ms. Park, and, uh, this, Mr. Kim is here as well, the property owner. Uh, I should probably start with the story poles. We were at the site today. We were, uh, walking it with Commissioner Peak, and we're surprised that, that, at the damage. Mr. Kim was notified, uh, about a week and a half ago of the damage. Did file a police report on October 21st. It's a strong feeling that there was vandalism. Due to some past interactions with, uh, certain individuals, that's, you know, the, the police did take a, take a report, and that has been filed. So I don't know how that bears on your decision if, uh, on repairing those, but we did know as of a couple of weeks ago, is, uh, Renika had said that they were, uh, fully compliant and in, and in place. So I don't know when the wind event was, uh, either, so I just figured that was, uh, worth stating. With that, uh, I think the presentation's good. We do have a PowerPoint, and I would like to know if we could just get that pre-set up in case, uh, we get to the questions. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The, the PowerPoint is available to you now?
Okay, great.
And you have a clicker to advance it?
I don't have, actually, um, my iPad is not working.
I think that what the applicant was asking about the PowerPoint is that if he needs to comment, he was gonna go through it.
Correct. We're not, I don't plan to go through the PowerPoint. I'd like to reserve our time to respond to questions, but if need be, it'd be, uh, the, Mr. Lee will be probably referencing some of the diagrams and some detail information, uh, specific to the variance requests.
Okay.
So with that, thank you again, and, uh, we'll look forward to answering questions.
We have 13 minutes left. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and clo, no speakers. One raised hand from Joe Drummond. Joe, you there?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
I just wanted to, again, ask staff why, um, I mean, it, this one seems like it's on the edge of, of the neighborhood anyway, but I just would like to know what the average size home across the street or next to it, or like how many houses are nearby, and what's the average size of them. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. All right, let's go ahead and close the hearing.
Did they want to rebut?
Do you guys want to rebut Joe's comments in regards to the neighboring properties? I know that the, one house burned down, and the, the other one, both those are about 7,000 square feet, I think.
This would be relevant under the Site Plan Review Neighborhood Character Assessment.
Yeah.
I guess I would ask, Renika, do you have the, the slide that shows the, the other houses in the neighborhood?
I believe it is included in the attachments. Well, it only shows, um, one, two-story development, not the sizes of the homes.
I think we have a slide in the PowerPoint that can show the other two-story homes and, and probably relevant to this question.
Thank you. Uh, next page, please.
This is a areas photograph of our site and the surrounding neighborhood. As you can see, just across our street from the Canaan Dune, there's a, that house is, uh, maybe the latest development within this neighborhood, uh, two stories, uh, flat roof, uh...
I, I can interject that the, I'm sorry, that the, the graphic with the two-story houses is PDF page 65, if you have that. It's the PDF, it's the PDF number, so...
We, we, staff does not have the full agenda report available to pull up to locate the specific pages at this time, if the applicant team would like to continue.
Okay, I mean, I can, I've been in the two houses that are right next door to this property. One of them, as I said, had burned down, but I'd been in it prior to it, and they were both very large, two-story homes.
And you see the, the empty big lot, uh, east of our, from our, our property? Today, when we, uh, visit the site, we s, noticed, uh, new constructions, same two stories for that houses, and seemingly quite big. Even the, the, the property, the, the latest one that I mentioned, I'm very sure that's, uh, much bigger than our house sizes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Just a quick detail, so, uh, 5620 Canaan Dune is 5325 square feet, and 5630 Canaan Dune is, uh, uh, six, uh, over 6,000, 6,400 square feet.
Thanks. Thank you. What's up for discussion? Would you like to go first?
I have some questions.
Good, go ahead. Craig?
I don't know that this is particularly organized order.
Okay, go ahead, Craig. Let's look, this, this is gonna be pretty quick, I think.
So, um, can anybody tell me if the original subdivision map shows that driveway coming off of Canaan onto the property?
I don't know. I don't know if the applicant team is aware.
I, I can tell you that I did look at the assessor map, and it shows it coming off the little side street.
So there, it is there?
It's on the side street.
In the original subdivision map, okay.
On the side, not on Canaan, but off of the shared with the house next door.
Right, so we have a situation here where everybody just went ape-fire over two driveways, and now these guys want two driveways. To me, I'm not sure why they designed this property the way they did, when you've got a subdivision and you have a main driveway. But you've turned it, so now you come in Alpha Canaan to come into the property.
Well, they, they're, they're not using the other one now.
Okay, the, the hearing's closed. We'll, if, we'll call you if we want to ask you questions.
So my, my point is, you've got a subdivision, and you didn't design the house to fit the subdivision. I'm not, I don't understand why, why that didn't happen. I, really, that's kind of the thing that's gotten me, is because you, you've got, you've got three houses in there, and nobody drives in that same driveway. We just had a long conversation about two driveways, and now all of a sudden, we've got two driveways. That's it. That's it from you for the moment.
Dennis, I, I just want to make another point on that, and that is they're asking for a variance not to use that driveway. The driveway off, uh, Canaan is requiring a variance, saying they can't build the house without it. And, uh, and here's, here's a driveway that's totally available, um, which I thought was very bizarre, too.
I agree. You and I agree. How about that? Go ahead, Craig.
Oh, yeah, question. Uh, the retaining wall in the driveway, Renika. I didn't see, you showed a graphic that showed it on the, I think it was the TDSF, or the, the development area map, that suddenly has a new red line on it indicating the retaining wall. I didn't see any numbers about the height of the wall or, uh, any elevation views of it. And, and maybe I should just back this up and say, one of my deeper concerns that affects a lot of issues on this site has to do with the current way that the story poles, the corner of the house is already several feet over the edge of the existing slope. And yet, a lot of their drawings show approximately eight feet of walk-around beyond that corner. There are a lot of issues about how that edge is treated. But I guess the first question would be, what, what does that retaining wall look like?
I believe there is a section of that wall in the grading plans, which were distributed under a separate cover.
Oh, the new one?
Yes, I'm gonna pull those up as well.
And that was only on, on PDF, right? Yeah, we didn't get that in our box.
Yeah, they were inadvertently, um, missed in the attachments to the report, so they were distributed on Friday.
I did look at it. I don't know if I... Go ahead. Oh, supplement. So sections. Okay, so there's, there's... The supplement has basically a site plan, uh, plan view of grading title sheet, grading drainage plan, and then one page of section views. None of those show particularly a wall, unless that's... I see some, a small wall, but I don't see a height on it, and I don't see... Look, while you're, while you're trying to clarify that, maybe I can address this for everybody else. Looking at that entrance, I saw some serious fissures in, right where the driveway would be now, suggesting... be now, suggesting slumping or what's, there was another word I used. Sheer, thank you, somebody was listening. That, that edge looks pretty tenuous, and it seems to me like if you were gonna put a driveway in there, you'd probably be needing an over-six-foot retaining wall that would need its own variance for the height, and some serious caissons or something that, to really stabilize that. So, do we have any kind of characterization, just on this one point now, in the driveway entrance area?
Is that a question for me?
I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah, I was looking at the grading plan. I see portions, I'm sorry, could you repeat the question? I did see the heights called out on the grading plan for the retaining wall.
Oh, what is it?
There's portions that I see are six feet, and then...
I don't see, like, engineering for caissons or something that would sort of justify specking the driveway in the look, apparently tenuous location that it is right now.
Yeah, normally, that level of detail wouldn't be included at this stage of the process. It is normally included during plan check, but in terms of demonstrating compliance with the zoning code, we're, we're primarily looking at how tall is the wall above grade?
Hold on, again, again, is it to the retaining wall?
Yeah.
Go ahead, John.
When you look at the aerials of this, you see the, the second, I think probably the second largest grading job ever done in Malibu, second largest slide, they closed Canaan for seven months. Was any study done to that?
For the record, that made for the most awesome skate park that ever existed.
Yeah, but I didn't see anything in here that even referred to that, that major slide and the remediation, and, and it's on, on this property, part of it. Was that considered at all in, in any of these reports?
Yes, I believe in the hazards discussion, there is reference to a fault that runs through the property. I'm currently looking on pages 16 and 17 of the report.
Yeah, I'm not referring to the fault, I, I don't, you probably weren't in Malibu, but Canaan Dune slid into, if you...
It was a single lane for a long time.
It was, it was no lane for a long time.
Yeah.
It was closed, and it doesn't, and, and it's very obvious, when you go up there, you see it, but it doesn't appear to be a factor in this application, and it, it seems like that's strange.
Yeah, I have a couple suggestions on how we should approach this. Why don't we take item by item? I have a question for the applicant. In regards to the driveway, the placement of the driveway, through the design process, did, how come you guys ended up, start creating your own separate driveway instead of using the driveway from the original subdivision?
Good question, which is what I said, yeah. During this process, there was quite a bit of conflict, and the adjacent property owner did not agree that that was a joint-use driveway. There's been some legal actions underway, but at the time, it was, the best path forward, I would say, was to, because it, it is locked, that Mr. Kim was restricted from using it, it was chained up, many times it was blocked by a commercial truck that was parked there, my, my understanding, for many, many days on end. So during the design process, with the, the high risk of potential conflict and further legal actions and appeals or what have you, it was, felt it was best better to separate these properties and, and that, so that's...
So it was for legal reasons, not because of back and forth between consultants that felt that this is the best way to go?
No, but maybe Mr. Lee might have some further comments on the placement and the, and the design of it, if you're interested in that.
Yeah, no, as I, I know, when you go from consultant, consultant, sometimes you get pushed down a path that might not necessarily be the best way to approach a project.
Yeah, I just want to express, I mean, this was the, one of the items that we have discussed with the project planner, previous to Renika, his name was David Ng. So when we require, I mean, the request about this approach, I believe there was thorough review within the planning department in collaboration with the city attorney departments, and then they reviewed the entire, the initial subdivision, you know, conditions and all the, you know, documents, including the city municipal code. At the end of their conclusion was, they can allow the, our driveway approach off from the Canaan Dune.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can we ask the city attorney again?
Go ahead.
Did this happen?
I, I didn't review this. Are you saying that you do not have access off the existing driveway? Is that what you're, you're claiming?
Trevor.
No, do I have this wrong? Okay.
The way, the way that it was presented to me earlier when I was on site, is that there was a civil conflict with the neighbor, the neighbor, the, the house that's closest to them, that shares the, that driveway.
Yep.
Right? And because of whatever legal action was taking place, like, that was considered a non-feasible method for them to use.
What legal action?
I believe that the two neighbors, maybe the owner can come up and testify as to, or either one of you, maybe Joe, on how that transpired, but I believe that there was legal action that was taken and it actually went in your client's favor.
Yes, that's the case, so the dispute was essentially, was there a shared easement or access with that, the, the property owner? It has, it has been the initial ruling in the favor of Mr. Kim, however, you know, there's still a high risk going forward, it's, and this conflict could continue, and, you know, the, so...
So you have the right to access it?
Some of that is speculating about what, what could happen, and at the same time, the, the staff was working with us on, as Mr. Lee had explained, the alternative driveway.
So, so Mike, I, I'll go back to my original question. Does, if he has permission to use that driveway and it's part of the subdivision that was developed, it doesn't matter what those people do say or whatever, they can fight all they want, he's allowed to use that driveway. Am I correct?
As it stands now, yes, recently with...
Okay, so...
But again, is that subject to appeal? Is it subject to further legal action?
But that's part of the subdivision map. How can you appeal that when that's what's been approved?
Okay, we should let him, unless there's more...
So, again, they, staff was, was working with the applicant from the very early stages to look at the alternative driveway, and, and, and that's what's before you today is the variance for that.
I think we have enough information on that, so we can keep going for...
Well, I have a question on that.
For the applicant?
For our city attorney.
Yeah, can you direct it to staff?
Okay.
If it's been adjudicated that they have the right, and staff is working on it with them prior to that, that's moot. They have the right to use that driveway, according to a judge.
It's, it's...
Hold on, I, I think that what's getting completely lost in this conversation here, again, is the process that it takes an applicant to go through this, right? What we're hearing from them is that staff, somebody, I'm not saying it was Renika, at some point led them down a road, and they believed and came forth with a project that did not use that driveway because of that conflict. And now subsequent to that, I don't know how, maybe you could testify like how recently that was resolved, now they may or may not be able to use that other driveway, and that owner may try to challenge it and hold it up longer. I'm very much agreeing with all of us, it's like, why would you not use that? But I think the timeline is getting thrown out here, and that we're not even paying attention to it. I don't know whether or not that matters, is another point.
Yeah, we shouldn't be playing the applicant for, what happened in the design process, but, you know, we're not here to evaluate the merits of the lawsuit also. As it stands here today, there is access from either of these driveways, and that's the facts that have been established here tonight.
Craig, and my point on that would be that we have to make a variance to, to use that driveway, and with an alternate legal access, that variance can't be made.
You're saying, the, the new driveway requires the variance and the extra fire, fuel modification, that could very well be a reason for you to be able to not make the findings for the supporting the variance, or also could give you, if you want to present the opportunity for them to bring the project back without that driveway, you could give them the chance to redesign also, if you can't make those findings.
That was my...
Do you guys wanna do a straw poll to see how we, I mean, it seems like we're all on consensus.
I would counsel that we just leave it on the table and talk about other things and come back to what we feel about it.
I, I think it would be prudent for us to try to, if we're going down a road of, of maybe not, you know, where we wouldn't be approving it as it is, that we kind of go through some of those other items, to maybe give them a little more of a heads-up on what they should be coming back with, because otherwise, this is gonna go back and forth for the next 10 years.
Good point. Right? So I think we're fairly clear on the, on the easement, I, not the variance? Okay. As the driveway, okay, let's move on to the next one.
Well, did, did, I, I just don't feel I got an answer on the geology. Did anybody look at that, that slide? The remediation of it and how it affects this property?
I think we, we can make that as part of a condition on, you know, as I said, they haven't, they have not gone, they're just in the planning stage right now, and that will be further down the road. I think we deal with, we go with this on a lot of projects, but basically we're...
I disagree. We, we, we get a geology report on all our projects, every one, it's required. We get a factor of safety.
Renika, do you wanna?
Yeah, so we don't attach the geotactical reports, but a comprehensive review of those geotactical reports are done prior to the geotactical reviewers approving the project.
We, we go through this all the time, where basically, we're starting to question geology and stuff like that, and...
Well, my question is very simple, did the geotactical report study that landslide?
And she just told you that if, wouldn't be in front of us if that didn't happen.
She said they had a geotactical report. The question is, did it address that?
As I said, we can, we can throw that in there as a condition, John.
Well, it's not really a condition, but if, if this is moving to continue, if you want additional information about what study has been done, that's something staff can provide offline, doesn't need to be done at the hearing.
Okay.
I don't, I don't see the issue so much with the geology commissioner. I, I, this is one of our better geologists that comes before us, and they have for years, and I believe that they've done what they were supposed to do, otherwise, it wouldn't have gotten as far as our senior planner, and it wouldn't have got as far as we are. So I believe that that's, that's been mitigated, to be honest.
Question?
Okay, go ahead, John.
Craig and I observed, and it's...
I, I, I'm gonna stop you on this question, because we're not geologists.
No, it has nothing to do with geology.
Okay.
Okay, nothing. Okay?
I thought you guys talked about...
We observed story poles over the four-to-one, the three-and-a-half, three-to-one slope, actually over onto the side of the hill, okay? And the, the, the drawings show the house in a substantially different position, eight to 10 feet back. The fire department requires a walk-around, there's absolutely no possible way you can walk around this cliff, okay? You're up in the air. So, just like the house on, on Zimrez that had to be pulled back, was the, were the story poles inspected, and, and if they are in the right place, how do we explain the fact that they are not on a three-to-one pad?
Honestly, I do not know. They weren't approved to be off of the four, the three-to-one pad. Maybe the applicant team can speak to the certification that was done. I do have a certification on file from a surveyor, but the story pole plan did not include poles to be placed in a steep slope. I don't know if they were added for support, I mean, I honestly, I can't...
No, they were, they had, they had the flags on them and everything.
Okay, well, I can't speak to that.
Okay. That's concerning to me, because we had another situation like that in another house, where the applicant had to withdraw his, his, his plans and start all over again, because of the way the slope was calculated.
I'd be happy to take another look at the story pole plan to make sure, but I don't believe there were poles that were authorized to be in a steep slope.
Okay.
I, I have a couple data points or observations about this that pertain both to the development area and to the geology, and this is all under the, the rubric of a variance on a 2.5-to-1 or greater slope. One, one observation, in the past, we, on some slopes, we've required a setback of 25 feet. I recall that in La Costa, we had a case about, I don't know, four years ago, it was very similar to this, where it was a steep slope dropping off to the side, not a coastal bluff, just a steep slope, and the poles were right on the edge, and we denied it on that basis, that it needed to be setback, and I don't remember if we said it needed to be at least 10 feet or something, but, but that was a problem. Now, the other fix for this, if the story poles, for example, are in the right place right now, would be, would affect the development area, which I think has its own issues already, and I could get to those in a minute, but you'd be, and it would, this would also affect the grading, because if the poles are in the right place, and you need an eight-foot approximate walk-around there, the, they have, the five-foot fire department, and they have a little extra drawing, that would imply cutting the site down far enough, you know, on that angle, cutting it down to a point where you had that extra eight feet out there, that would be approximately, I don't know, six, eight feet down, because we're pretty close to a one-to-one here in places. And if you did that, then you'd be talking about grading the overall site of, and I can go through the back of the envelope calculation if you want, but it's something like 5,000 cubic yards of non-exempt grading, if, if you were to bring the level of the site down to a point where all of this would fit far enough back from that edge. So either the poles are in the wrong place, and the whole house is in the wrong place, or the slope itself is just not permissible the way it is. I mean, this is, I'm, I'm trying to frame this as a question, but this is what I'm seeing there.
They have a guard wall, and that's where the half-probably is.
And it's, well, and on some of the, and I can, let's see, I can show, I can tell you what page is if you, you all wanna play along here on the...
That'd be best.
Yeah.
Chair Leonard, actually, before we move on, maybe you want to ask the applicant if they are amenable to continuing this to make changes, that they want this additional input, or if we should instead be framing this in terms of coming back with a resolution?
There's your question, applicant. Do you want to respond? Thank you.
So the, the question is to, to keep gathering information based on the, the variances and the, and the modifications requested, we would appreciate hearing as much information as possible tonight, so we can come back if it, if it's continued after that, so I guess I'm answering yes to both.
Okay.
So...
They, is the, the, it seems that the consensus of the, of the commission is to continue the item to give you an opportunity to redesign, to address the concerns they're gonna raise tonight. It sounds like you are open to that, and you don't want a decision tonight, up or down.
Well, if we had, if we had a decision tonight with specific conditions, certainly we'd, we'd appreciate that, but it sounds like the story pole, the, the area, there's nothing that is gonna be built on that slope, so there's, the, the plans show that there's the, the space there, so I'm concerned that something happened with those story poles that are leading us down this, this conversation that probably isn't, but I, I do appreciate if, from what you, what the commissioner had seen, if that's the case, that obviously is a concern, but I...
Okay, that's, that's sufficient, we just wanted to...
Let's just keep going, then.
Okay, we'll continue with the feedbacks.
Okay, and, and just for some references, the, you can see this clearly on the fire access plan on PDF 49, that shows basically sort of an imaginary extension out into space where the walk-around would be, relative to the story poles we're looking at now. And also in the massing study on PDF 63, that shows a similar area hanging out into space, as I, as I call it here. Now, if you guys are looking at that, I, I, that leads to questions to me about development area concerns. First, we, we have a spec in the staff report of 9,711 square feet development area, just under the limit, but we have in the landscape plan, L2 specs, a total hardscape of 10,254 square feet. Now, all that hardscape is gonna be part of, that's part of the development area, so that's already an indication that they're over the 10,000. that's already an indication that they're over the 10,000. Landscape, so that would be on L2. L4 shows another 1,573 square feet of development area along the north side of the road that not only would put us substantially over the 10,000 limit, but it's also now a second area of development. And I don't know, maybe a planner or Trevor, you could clarify. My understanding has been a development area is kind of a singular bubble, that you can't have like two separate areas adding up to 10,000, because that would sort of militate against the notion that you could have fire buffer clearance around your development area. If you have two separate development areas, adding to 10,000, you could, that would still be creating much more clearance.
I, you know, I'm going to defer to the planning staff on the past interpretation, but you're correct that they usually require consolidation if you're going to the 10,000 square foot exception, but some things, you know, if it's not going to have, if the brush clearance is not going to be, sometimes there's overlapping brush clearance, which would allow you to, you know, spread it out or do different things. So it's site specific, but in general, yes, the requirement is to consolidate to limit the amount of brush clearance required and impact on that.
Yeah, so again, that's on L4 showing 1,573 on the north side of the road, on the other side of the driveway.
That is an outdated plan. The plan has since been updated after the project was re-reviewed by the plant, by the ERB. So those numbers are not.
So I'm looking at the wrong plans?
Ask you, you're saying L1, 2, 3, and 4 are no longer any good?
No, she's talking on the PDF version, not on our site.
Okay, well, nonetheless, that would be a concern, and let's double check it. Also, and maybe this is an outdated thing too, I don't know, several documents talk about a, plan views show a deck area, presumably wooden or trex or something, hanging out over the edge of the, the very steep edge of the slope. And for example, L4 shows that, the slope analysis.
Wait, Craig, is there any way you could stick to the, to this plan? Because we're using completely different numbers than what we're using.
Well, I'm looking at all the documents we have, and if one is out of date, fine, but the slope analysis isn't out of date, right?
Well, and that's what I was expressing during my oral presentation. The slope analysis was not updated when the pool was removed, and there were some other things that were reconfigured.
So the deck is gone, the deck is gone now?
I believe there were some modifications to the deck.
That's what I'm saying. L4 is, yeah.
Are you looking at this?
No, he's not.
I didn't, I didn't get that one. I don't have that one.
You don't have?
No.
This?
No.
Should have come with your pad.
The full size?
No, I didn't get that. What I just, I've looked at it on the iPad and presumably read everything, but it's hard to tell, you know, what is new and old.
Because your, our L4 is an ESHA plan.
A general cleaning up of the plans and all of that showing what's being put forth would alleviate this confusion.
And back to my comment about having resizing PDFs so you can actually read the numbers.
Well, while you're on, as long as you're on the Ls, can I make a couple comments?
Let's not get to the landscape yet. There's more on that. So, okay.
Everything that you're quoting off the PDF, we, we're looking at something completely different.
Yeah, the 11 by 17 plans that were included with the report are the current plans.
Because our numbers are completely different. Our, our L2 and our Fours, everything we're looking at, we have no idea what you're talking about.
Your PDF is part of your staff report.
Yeah, yeah. So Skylar's comment pertains, and let's move on.
Okay.
Ridgeline, I know you guys are all going to groan, but this meets the definition of primary ridgeline, and I'll tell you why.
But it was approved, the subdivision was approved a long time ago. That's not a good point, Commissioner. It's not.
What it counsels is that they, it should be a one-story house, not a two-story house.
I'm just going to, I appreciate you bringing up that point of conversation. I would be really reluctant to do so based on the fact that the three houses adjacent to this, some of which were built relatively recently, and one that's now under construction. I think almost every house on that side of Canaan in that area, not every house, but probably over 50% of them are two-story, as you go around the perimeter of that ridgeline.
Yeah, no, if I may, this is the only one subject to the limitation in the code that I'm about to mention.
How about if they, how about if they come back, that they provide us a map of the adjoining homes of within 500 feet, like a normal.
Here's the problem. The problem is not, there are, yes, sure, there are other two-story houses, they don't, they don't have the same problem that this one has in that there's, there's a broad ridge that the road comes up, it has some banks and cutaways that block a lot of view, and then you get to this point as you're coming up, and you can see it on the story pole photos, where suddenly the view opens up more, and you can see to the mountains more than 500 feet beyond, out to the northeast from here. That's the bit of code in the ridgeline code where there are different things that can hang you up on that, and this one is where there's a prominent edge against a backdrop of land at least 500 feet behind it when viewed from a public street, and contains an average of slope at least 3.1. I think those are both met, and none of the other houses, in the way they're oriented, have that same kind of like, you're just coming up, and suddenly there's this monolith in, in the view.
I mean, I disagree, because I think that before the houses that were adjacent to it were there, you would have known the same thing. I'm not saying it's not, I'm not saying it doesn't exist. I'm just saying that I think it's hard for us as a commission and a council to make those findings that like the four houses next door are allowed to, and this guy is not. And they're very similar in their layout.
But they were not allowed to.
It's a question of the terrain and where the view is, and what you can see from the road or what you can't see from the road. They don't, they don't really block views in the way that this one.
So is Commissioner Hill, your desire for some sort of diagram to show whether or not this is in fact a consideration of a ridgeline condition?
Well, we already have the photograph that on the, I don't know what they called it, but this sort of massing study that shows when you're driving up the road, and Renika, you were talking about it, with the setback is 14 feet, or if it's 20 something feet, and you have the different volumes on there.
Right.
To my mind, they all block the view of the mountains more than 500 feet away. I mean, in the big picture, I know you guys don't want to agree with me, but I would say that that, this is a site that wants a one-story house.
And what Craig is talking about is shown on northwestern view of proposed residence in our staff report. Okay, it shows the house next door, and then this house.
That's the photograph. They also have the massing study that shows it even more dramatically, I would say.
I have a question for the applicant. Is there a detail that shows the square footage of the first floor and the second floor?
You getting to two-thirds rule?
No, but just wanted to see what we're looking at. I've been trying to, I've been trying to, like, just browsing through, I couldn't find it.
Well, if you're asking about the view block, there's the second floor, two-thirds part, the one third that is built is on the back of the house, you can't see it.
So you're saying that the.
It's on G 0.60. There's a table on the bottom left.
That's right, yeah.
This is proposed total developable square TDSF ground level and second level.
What's the ground level?
Ground level is 4332, and the second level is 2818.
Yeah, so it'd be, if you did a single-story house, you'd be doing 4,000 square feet, including a three-car, including a three-car garage, so.
And including a thousand square foot or up to 4,000 square foot basement, you could do that.
Yeah, and exactly.
But you can't see it.
Correct.
Exactly, and that plays into other concerns that, I don't know if you want to go here yet, but about the setbacks and the ESHA.
Go ahead, Dennis.
So me, for me, the elephant in the room here is the design of the house and the driveway. You're not going to get a vote for me on this, because to me, should have designed it to use for the driveway. Whether you're fighting with the neighbor or not, you have the right. So to come in off of Canaan, I'm not doing it. So I'm just letting you know, that needs, if you're going to come back to us, that'll be the one thing I'm going to look for, that you've changed that. Now, you take part of that house, and you, you take that section, and the garage is over here now, and you've taken what was here, and now it's back over here, but you won't get anything else out of me on this, because whether the neighbor's right, wrong, or indifferent, in a subdivision, he has the, had the right to go in that driveway. You guys, I know you fought hard to do that, but to me, you're not coming in off of Canaan. So that's where I.
Commissioner Smith, you're clarifying that with the current additional entrance off of Canaan, you're unable to make the required variance findings and other findings on the project correct?
That is correct.
Okay, Drew, I think our purpose is to add all the comments.
I thought that, that comment with Skylar's comment about maybe putting a basement, those are, I think we resolved that issue that Craig brought up.
Yeah.
So next one?
Well, I want, if you don't mind, I'd like to mention one of the findings for the encroachment on the setback on 14 of 18. Now, this is not a finding, but it's a description, says that they have, the other properties in the neighborhood got to do the same thing. Okay, and what I want to point out is they didn't. Okay, if you look at, if you look at the houses being built, and you can see it in the story pole photos.
Oh, you're talking about the Schmidt's house?
Yeah, we made, there's a very large house being built. It's being built right now, it's got a steel frame on it. We made them move back from the bluff and put in a firewall along the edge of the bluff. They were not allowed to move right up to the bluff. Neither is the house next door, right up against the bluff.
This is the house that you guys mentioned when you went to the site, you saw the other house under construction.
The big steel house, yeah. We made them move back, and you can, you can see from the view, all of those houses are not on the edge. Okay? And the main reason for that at the time was fire danger. Okay, they had to, actually, the one being built now has a, I think it's a four or five foot wall along the whole front of it. That's a firewall. So, so that, that provision can't be made, that you can go right up to the bluff, because the neighbors got to do it. They didn't. Okay? That's, I want to point that out. It's a huge difference.
Notice, I also want to clarify something about the second story. I don't think there is a determination here that you can't go two stories, but that the mass of the second story with the bluff, with the looking up, I think was a little bit heavy.
So the recommendation would be to try to stay under 18 feet?
Yeah.
For as much of the home as you can.
Yeah, I'd like to mention something on the landscape plan, if I could.
Can I just ask one question real quick? Are you guys in agreement, you fellow commissioners, in agreement with my thought about the house and the driveway?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
So why are we continuing to talk? They're going to have to come back.
Because there's a lot of other problems with this house.
That'll all change.
They want to get some feedback.
We're trying to give them feedback so that they come back with a project that we can approve easier.
Okay, so I want to mention the landscape plan, L2. Okay, we're talking here about not being able to block views. Okay? The whole front of the house has a code RC, which is, I'm on page L1, L2, I mean, sorry. First, if you look to the left of the plan, there's two trees, okay, that are sort of where the driveway was supposed to, you know, not supposed to come in, but where they were proposing it, in that area, that are 25 feet tall and 20 feet wide. Okay, there's no question they blocked the view, and they're within the front yard setback.
Where those trees are sighted, they're sighted way down the hill.
No, they're, no, they aren't.
If you look at the topo map that's under, that's overlaid on?
The black line, it's about two feet over the edge.
Yeah, but look at the contour lines right there.
It's, yeah, it's about two feet over the edge.
Looks like it's a lot more than that, but that's just me. I could be wrong.
That's, see, the driveway, this is where the driveway comes in.
No, that is, no, that is not where the driveway comes in.
On those same trees, I should point out.
We should be clear in that what we're doing now is not trying to design the project, but just to raise issues and concerns that this current project has raised.
Those same trees, something to consider is we're not supposed to have non-natives more than 50 feet from the house. Should be all native landscaping beyond that. So, for example, what you're talking about is an olive and a lemon tree.
Now, the other one that's more disturbing is the whole front of the house has a code RC.
A hedge.
Yeah, but those trees, those bushes are six to 15 feet tall.
How about we get clarified?
They can't be more than 42 inches.
So it's important to remember on the landscaping stuff that runs around the perimeter of that, and then in Malibu, especially in this area, because you can see up to the mountains, right, that all of that landscaping has to be limited to 42 inches. So all that stuff around that rim there, like pretty much almost anything that you would see off of the main road there that would be blocking that, is going to have to be relatively low.
There's, there's more. I mean, there's, those are the biggest examples.
Why don't you?
Well, there's a table on L3, everything that's over 42 inches, basically.
My comment is sort of.
Get that corrected. That'll be corrected.
You're right, but my comment is, to us, is that it behooves us at this stage of this, right? I believe to try to give the applicant as much guidance as we can. So if there are other things like that, that you specifically want to call out, like, let's do it right now.
Well, I was going to say, how about we just, I'm sorry. A blanket statement that to make sure that their biologist reviews the Malibu's municipal codes in regards to the planting schedule.
Landscape architect.
Our landscape architect, yeah.
Has this project been reviewed by the city biologist yet, or no?
Yeah.
I was just thinking, when the, when the applicant updated the landscaping plan to address the ERB comments, I believe she did take another look at the landscaping plan. I'm going to look just to.
Well, I can, I can tell you.
The date, the date of this landscape plan is from 2020.
Oh, that is not, no.
So one thing, just for example, they have Pride of Madeira outside the 50-foot zone, that's invasive. They have, hard to tell where, but they have Potocarpus, which is a hedge, they go to 20 feet, Maya Purum, African daisies, European grapes. If they're, if those are within the 50 feet, that's okay, but beyond 50, no.
The 11 by 17 inch plans are the most current, which are dated October 2024.
Correct, but the landscape plan is dated July 27, 2020.
Got it.
Do you guys understand the comments about that? So you have like this 50-foot radius, anything that goes outside of that radius, right, has to be native. And then you have that edge situation that's sort of running around.
Yeah, and I want to just put up a word of caution that we have a grading, I mean, a slope analysis procedure that has not worked in certain places where you have steep, steep slopes and flat, flat edges, and I believe that's the reason why the story poles are over the edge, and they just flat out can't be over the edge. So they may want to review the 6626 Zumeres, I think it's 26, application that Doug Bird spoke about that had to be withdrawn and redrawn, and took an extra year because they went over the edge when, when the calculations. What?
What are the contour lines on this?
They should be five foot, right, Renika?
They should be five foot contours.
Yeah.
But if you have a slope like this, and you use this averaging method that didn't work on that other house, you'll get the same problem on this house.
There are bits here that look like they're approaching one to one.
Yeah, and that's, that's the, that's the other question I have. The slope analysis looks pretty rudimentary to me, because if you stand on the, on the edge and look down, it is. There's, you die if you jumped over that edge. So I I I question whether that was done properly, but again, that's up to some survey or somewhere. But if it's found to be wrong, then it's wrong. Now, another question I had, and this is a question of staff, you expanded the ESHA because after the fire, the stuff grew back. Well, ESHA never goes away when there's a fire. So how did the ESHA get smaller and then get moved back? Once ESHA burns, it's still an ESHA.
I mean, if we have specific staff questions, I mean, if it's better to take that offline, but ESHA's always done site-specific, whatever is on the map, it's gonna be studied in the particular lot, you know?
Yeah, I know, but I mean, here's a plant that grows back, and they say, oh gee, ESHA came back. That's the statement in the staff report, and I was just wondering how that happens because once it's ESHA, it's ESHA, you know? Otherwise, we wouldn't have the ESHA now.
Like I said, if you have further questions for staff, you probably want to not use the time of the hearing to do that, they can go answer that offline, but if there's any other feedback, or if you've given enough to them, then I think the motion would be then to continue this to a date uncertain.
We have to move.
One more thing.
Go ahead.
Yeah, this, this, under the context of the site plan review and neighborhood character, this is not an absolute thing, but just please be mindful, we have a dark sky ordinance that limits lighting. It does not pertain to interior lighting, but you have a lot of glass and big windows looking out over a wildlife kind of area, and so it'd be great to think about either, are there ways to minimize that a little bit, or think about window treatments, or just, we're trying to.
They have.
In the name of neighborhood character, to keep it.
We do not have the ability to regulate the interior lighting of, under the dyke's dark skies ordinance.
No, and I say, it's not a legal thing, it's more of a, a vibe thing.
I'm gonna move, we continue this item to a date uncertain.
I'll second that.
Yes.
All right, rule call, please.
Commissioner Massa?
Yes.
Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Pete?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yep.
Motion carries.
All right, next, we have.
That was the most contentious unanimity I've ever seen.
We have the calendar for 2025. Oh, boy. I have one que, I have one question. Is there any way we can move the January twenty-first meeting to the twenty-second? Because I will not be here on the twenty-first.
Well, that is viable in terms of chamber scheduling, from what I can see on our city calendar at this point. It would be untraditional, but it would be up to a decision that a quorum of the body could decide to make this evening.
Okay, I have another.
And would you like to hear the staff presentation?
Sure.
Or do you want to just move into this question?
Let's go ahead, I'm sorry, I didn't realize there's a presentation room.
We want to hear from her.
Okay, I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
She's the star, it's the last act of the night.
It's gonna be really, really quick.
You're the headliner tonight.
I don't think that's true. Next slide, please. So, 2024, when the commission adopted the 2024 calendar of meetings, it was done so with a request that I return to you at the first meeting of November with a request to revisit the status of the December sixteenth, 2024 Regular Planning Commission meeting based on the departmental needs and whether or not we had projects that would be available to be re-reviewed on that evening. Our current planning staff have three proposed developments that would be public hearing-related, and additional consent calendar items on track to be ready for hearings on that date if the commission determines tonight that they would like to reinstate the meeting.
Let's do it.
In addition to that, in the proposed 2025 calendar, I'm sorry, next slide, oh, you got it, in the proposed 2025 Calendar of Planning Commission meetings, the commission is traditionally dark twice per year. In some years, the, a quorum of the body has decided on a third date that they are dark for. Monday, December fifteenth, is the first day of Hanukkah, which is why there's the three asterisks next to cancel. Next slide. You would also have the option to reschedule that meeting and hold it on Tuesday, December sixteenth, 2025, should you choose to maintain two dark meetings, which would mirror the practice of our city council. The first meeting of January will be dark because of the timing in regards to creating a packet during the city hall's closure, and we're gonna be crunching to get you a packet for the second meeting of of January. And yes, any questions?
Okay, I have a comment. We're, we're here to consider December twenty-four also, correct?
Yes, so a decision, I'd like direction from the commission on whether you wish to reinstate that meeting, or you wish it to remain a dark meeting?
Thank you.
As well as the adoption of the 2025 calendar.
Okay, well, my opinion on both, my personal opinion is, I will not go to either one of those meetings.
You're consistent, you say it every year, and you have for the last fifteen, I gotta hand you that.
Yeah, and I want to, I want to point out.
But I disagree.
Okay, I, I, and I assume some of you have family, there is Christmas, staff gets a extra week off, starting last year, for Christmas, and I don't appreciate having to interrupt, not being able to travel, and not, and having family visiting during Christmas, a week before Christmas, period. I don't, I don't think that's proper, especially when we decide, well, staff gets a whole week off, but you guys can't have a day off, okay? That, that, to me, is wrong, and so I, you can, you can vote to have a meeting, I, I just want my own Christmas, and, and.
And you're allowed to have that.
And also, I do not see why, and this is, Christmas is maybe a Christian holiday, we get three asterisks for Hanukkah, and we gotta move that date, but Christmas? No, okay? So I, I don't want to be a bad guy, but council doesn't have a meeting that.
John, you're sounding a little grinchy right now.
I do not mind, I do not mind us taking December first and starting at four in the afternoon, whatever you want to do, if you want to slide in some more stuff, but to tell my relatives they can't come out, or I can't go visit them, or I can't do this, or I can't do that, at Christmas time, I object to.
But this is nine days, nine days before.
Oh, yeah.
Rebecca, go ahead.
Just as a point of clarification, the meeting that we're discussing would be more than a week before Christmas, so you would still be looking at having that break from the date of the meeting until January twenty-first or January twenty-second, if you followed the chair's proposal as a time with family. Staff looks at the major holidays scheduled for Christianity, for Judaism, and for Islam when developing the calendar, and if it is a, what is considered to be a major religious holiday, we do try to make an accommodation for those things. Happily, for our commission, that doesn't happen to us very often, although it sometimes does for Easter. We more often have conflicts with scheduled holidays from the federal government that take place on a Monday and require us to move to a Tuesday.
Okay, well, as I said, I'm gonna make a motion that we have, we extend the, the hours for the first meeting in December and not have a second meeting in December.
So it would be, just be not adding the meeting that we talked about possibly adding, is that correct, Rebecca?
I would also like to add that the projects that staff have scheduled to be available, to be heard on December fifteenth, will not be finalized in time for a meeting, I'm sorry, I'm saying the wrong dates, I'm looking at the twenty-five calendar, the sixteenth. Those projects will not be ready in time to meet our peer review deadlines, as well as our assistant planning director deadlines for the, for an earlier packet. They would be available on the, on, for that second meeting of this December, or they could be delayed until the second meeting in January of twenty-five.
I think everyone's also made it clear that starting, starting earlier is not, we're not giving the public due chance to comment, so I think that one's off the table.
The city council does.
I know, but they, they do their consent calendar and other stuff beforehand, they don't.
And that's what we can do.
I'm not coming in early.
Go ahead, Skylar.
I unfortunately have a conflict with two of the dates, the second January date and the first date in February. Totally fine if you guys want to proceed, I'm just, I'm just aware of that now.
And we're changing the, I, I can't make January twenty-first either, so that's three of us.
Okay.
If we don't have a quorum of the body available on January twenty-first, we would need to reschedule that meeting regardless.
It's the twenty-second, right?
Twenty-third would even be better, but whatever.
Yeah, I'm just gone for a while.
Rebecca, you just said the twenty-second would work.
I just, I've simply looked at what is listed on the city's calendar for that date to make sure that I don't see anything identified as taking place in council chambers, and I don't, I don't have access to the calendar for this room, and I didn't have this question come to me prior to this. Do you have that system?
It may be, I mean, we're also talking about changing from our normal regular planning commission schedule, so.
But we can do so since it's, we're adopting the calendar for next year, we have not yet adopted next year's calendar. It would be a change, but.
All right, may I go back?
And Parker is going to take a look at the schedule of what's booked for the room.
Do you guys want to continue this for another meeting?
We could do that.
No, because I.
Well, she needs, she needs about December.
I need, I need to know our dates.
Can I, my comment about December, my main thought is not about our own convenience or, but, but about the public, and that, you know, a lot of people are busy, it's getting to the holidays, I could see doing the meeting if, if it was like purposefully some sort of lightweight agenda that we're not expecting fifty people to show up, or attorneys, or, you know, high contentious public stuff, but I think that's starting, that's right in the thick of the holidays, and people are trying to shop and do a bunch of stuff, so I, I'm not against holding the meeting, it would be, be nice if we could do it in a way that we're not depriving the public of some things.
Do we have a motion? Why don't we do this? I'd like to make a motion that we have the, the December sixteenth meeting, and that we, this year, and that we have staff get back to us in regards to the January meeting. Does anyone want to second that?
No, I don't think that we can do that.
Staff, staff can get back to you regarding the January options, and Parker has just looked, and we don't have a conflict for either Wednesday, January twenty-second, or Thursday, January twenty-third, if we can get a quorum of the body for one of those dates.
Can I ask you guys if we could go earlier than the twenty-first, like the week prior to that, or does that not work with when people come back to work?
That's city council.
I'm going to Germany, but I'm back on the eighth of January, so I'm okay with that.
I'm gone.
It, it would be challenging for staff to get a pocket.
You come back on the twenty-first, so I leave the.
It would be challenging for staff to get a packet to you with a ten-day advance. We can certainly meet our legal deadlines, which are to get a packet to you three days before the meeting. I think it would most likely fall somewhere between the ten-day and the three-day.
Well, I would like to, is there a way to characterize, could we do this December and ensure that it's a light meeting somehow? And not, not a public-intensive?
The, the, items that are currently calendared as tentatively held for that meeting date, should you make a decision to reinstate it, are, I believe, I, I'd have to double-check it, but I think that they're mostly all ten-day items without any significant discretionary requests, and I was honestly looking at the possibility of trying to see, depending on how quickly people get completed, Woolsey Fire Planning Verification Time Extension requests into me, I was aspirationally hoping to crank some of those into either that meeting or the January meeting.
Well, I would vote for it if we can keep it light, like that sounds, and John, you can be on vacation.
Also, I'm just gonna put this out there, I think it's awesome for somebody that has a fire rebuild, if they can go into this new year, like having their thing sorted and decided, and I would, I would encourage you, get as many on that as you can.
Extension.
And I'll sit here till the late hours of the evening.
That's what I'm talking about, too.
Yeah, but wait, guys, you have to be in by Friday. They'll know every single fire rebuild Friday, okay? Period, this Friday. So how can something come in on this Friday and be on December sixteenth as a hearing item? It's not possible.
It is possible.
It's possible for them just to, just to apply on Friday, just to apply on Friday, and you're gonna process it by December sixteen?
Sir, that's, that's not what I'm suggesting.
What?
I'm suggesting that an item in process that has been deemed complete ahead of the deadline can't come into a later meeting on a schedule.
Yeah, we already know about those, she was talking about the ones we don't know about.
Well, I am actually. That would be impossible, sir.
That's what I said.
Yeah, and that's why, that's not under consideration.
Okay, but that's not what Rebecca just said.
We, we have Woolsey Fire Time Extension Complete applications today. I have other ones that are currently incomplete, that I'm anticipating getting the final pieces from the applicants, but I've been in discussions with them, and I should be getting those shortly. I don't know how many more will come in last minute. I had many people reach out to me for the first time today.
Right.
Those ones, I would not be anticipating trying to turn around quickly. Once that I've been working with people for the last three weeks, I, I would hope that I would be able to write more quickly.
But once they do a time extension, then it doesn't matter when we hear it, it's been applied for, and it counts when we pass it. So it doesn't matter, as long as you have, they've applied for it, it doesn't matter when we hear it.
I, I agree that.
Have we ever turned down a time extension for a Woolsey Fire?
We have given them less than they've asked for in certain situations.
Because they went over five years, but whatever.
And in, in this case, I, I honestly, I don't know what your decisions will be on each individual case. Each person is submitting their own letters explaining their personal situations.
I'm just gonna make the comment that I think it behooves us specifically in relation to the fire rebuild projects, that if we can get those before us, as they, if you've already deemed them approved, or you know that they'll be, get deemed approved, even if it's just an extension between now and then, let's have the meeting and move forward with that.
And just a point of clarification, we won't be deeming them approved, we will just be making a recommendation, and you will determine.
We will be the ones that are, yes. So again, I just, February, or January twenty-one and February three are out for me, so that's a non-negotiable of this.
I don't have my calendar, no.
We're gonna lose one of us, so.
Yeah, and Wednesdays are very bad for me, I have other meetings to go to.
I would like to do, let's go ahead and do the twenty-third.
Which is a what?
It's a Thursday.
Are we meeting on the sixteenth?
Yes, we are meeting on the sixteenth.
So the motion is, the motion is, light meeting on the sixteenth, continue the decision about twenty-second or twenty-third.
Okay.
Till, till you know which is workable for us.
I, I really kind of need to know.
Well, she's asking us to make, be definitive and decisive over what date in January you want.
I think we could, we could do the twenty-second or the twenty-third.
I, John can't do the twenty-second, so let's, let's go ahead and do the twenty, I like to make a motion for the twenty-third.
Okay. Okay.
The motion is to approve the calendar with changing January 21st to the January 23rd, 2025, and to reinstate meeting in December for Tuesday, December 16th, 2025, is that correct?
Correct.
Nice. Lightweight items.
Thursday?
The 16th? Yes, it would be a Tuesday.
Non-public intensive items.
He's referencing the 2025 calendar.
It's gonna be Monday, actually.
So, the 23rd.
No, that's...
25, in 2025, January 23rd.
No, yes.
Wait, what?
We got it correct, you have it correct, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm on board.
All right, can we have a roll call, please?
And Commissioner Smith, was that a second I heard?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think I made the motion.
Commissioner, Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Absolutely.
Are we doing this a light version?
You think you're playing, you got it.
You set the meeting, you can't, the commission can't control the agenda, that's set by the staff.
The 23rd, just be there, that's all.
Just be there.
I'll say yes.
Commissioner Massa?
No.
Commissioner Pete?
We moved it for you, to Thursday.
Yes.
December 16th.
No, we did that already.
I believe that his objection is to reinstating this year's meeting, and for that reason, he's voting no for the overall motion.
Oh, sorry, got it.
And the motion carries.
Okay.
Good night, everyone, meeting's over.
Everybody vote.